And I reboot Samantha Adams and call this regular board meeting of November 13, 2025 to order. The time is 5:01. I would like to remind everyone to silence your electronic devices. We acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the territorial homeland of the Njuu, the Moappa Band of Paiutes, and the Las Vegas Band of Paiutes. We'll have our opening item. The presentation of colors will be led by Clark High School Trustee Henry. Not yet. Please come in. You may be seated. All right, we're going to move on to item 1.02, adoption of the agenda. Before I open that item, is there anyone that did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? Okay, seeing none, then we'll close that. Trustee Satori, will you make a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, Madam President, members of the board, I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda and the addendum with flexibility and with the following change. Reference material has been provided for item 3.09, employment agreement, chief strategy officer.
Thank you. Trustee Cavazos.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes six to zero. We're going to go ahead and move on to 2.01. This is student reports. I'm turning it over to Ms. Sears or... Yes.
Madam President, members of the board, Kirsten Seer for the record. Tonight, I'm proud to continue our new tradition that has made its return to the boarded trustees meeting, student board reports. Tonight, we're pleased to welcome our next two student presenters. One from the Basic Academy of International Studies, representing trustee Stevens, District A, and trustee Asparza Stroffigan in Henderson. And one from Mission High School, representing trustee Vice President Zamora and trustee Johnson. These students are excited to share a few highlights about their school communities and give us a glimpse into the energy, creativity, and spirit that makes their campuses thrive. Please join me in welcoming our student speakers, and we will start with Madison Parisi.
Hi, I am Madison Parisi, and I am currently a senior at Basic Academy of International Studies. I'm a candidate for valedictorian for the graduating class of 2026. I am involved in sports, including varsity soccer of four years, softball of three, and a volunteer soccer coach. I also participate in extracurricular activities such as the Basic Academy Wind on Soluble, Varsity Quiz, Student Council, National Honor Society, and the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. To kick things off, two of my oldest sisters attended Basic, as well as my mother has worked there for 13 years. I will always remember the staff cookout at the football games and being the flyer for my sisters and I's makeshift tier teams. I won't ever forget running around the halls and playing tag with my sisters while my mom runs late for work. I've only had four years at Basic formally, but I have known it for generations. Basic has that effect on most, and all will remember its legacy. Basic has been around since 1942 and was relocated to the location it's currently at since 1972. We have many long-lived traditions that make our school unique from others. This past October, I participated in Paint the Bee, where all the seniors go up to the B on the mountain and paint it. We also have given the name to our student section, the Blue Manatee, and ever since it has stuck. This school year, many changes have happened to our school's physical appearance. Our quad area is receiving a makeover, as well as the cafeteria is being extended to make a bigger area for our students. In addition to our school's physical improvement, we have many programs that stand out. The International Back Laureate is an advanced program that sets students up for the most competitive universities. Classes are college-level courses that challenge students and prepare them for higher education. We have over 20 clubs and performing art programs that are available to all students with a variety of different interests. For example, our Robotist Club has qualified for state, and now we have a Varsity Quiz team, which we haven't had in 10 years. Our choir program recently traveled to Washington, DC. We also have a rock band doing performances at lunch and assemblies. Basic Academy is able to provide its students with a variety of dual-credit, AP, honors, and CTEs courses. I was able to participate in the fashion program for three years, earning my own CTE certificate. I am fortunate enough to be able to have 12 college credits by the time I graduate because of the wide range of opportunities Basic has provided for me and others. We have a range of odd sports, going from cross-country to swimming. Basic's men's volleyball team and softball team have won 4A state titles back-to-back. Our baseball team also won the 5A state title this past year, too, and our dance team is nationally ranked. Although Basic provides students with many opportunities for their future, here are some notable alumni. Harry Reed attended Basic and was the Senator of Nevada from 1987 to 2017. Basic also sent two students to Major League Baseball, Ryan Nelson and Chris Latham. Basic didn't just send students to Major League Baseball, but to the National Football League, who are Henry Rowling and Don Smerek. Basic has proven to be a respected high school, showing its excellence in academics, activities, athletics, and appearance. We strive for high standards so our students can become as successful as they can be. Thank you.
Great job, Madison. And I'd also like to acknowledge that Madison's principal, Mr. Hadavi, is here tonight to root her on. Thank you for being here tonight. And now, we will move on to Mick Hedges, who is a student at Mission High School.
Hello, my name is Mick Hedges. I'm a junior, and I'm a proud student at Mission High School. I was born in Idaho and moved to Las Vegas when I was 10 years old. While Las Vegas has become my home, I still have family in Idaho that I visit often. Family means a lot to me. Prior to Mission, I attended Southwest Career and Technical Academy and also have a sister that goes there who will be graduating this year. At Mission, I serve as a historian on our student council. In this role, I document school events, take photos, and help preserve the history and spirit of our campus. This is my second year at Mission, and during my time here, I've become deeply involved in both the school and recovery communities. I regularly attend AA and NA meetings and have truly valued the opportunity to support and connect with my classmates and peers. Outside of school, I'm involved with an organization called Tin-Hi, also known as APG. It's a safe and supportive place where students can hang out after school, attend recovery meetings, and share meals together. In my free time, I love playing guitar and recording music. My dream is to become a music artist or producer, because music is my greatest passion. Thank you.
And I reboot Samantha Adams and call this regular board meeting of November 13, 2025 to order. The time is 5:01. I would like to remind everyone to silence your electronic devices. We acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the territorial homeland of the Njuu, the Moappa Band of Paiutes, and the Las Vegas Band of Paiutes. We'll have our opening item. The presentation of colors will be led by Clark High School Trustee Henry. Not yet. Please come in. You may be seated. All right, we're going to move on to item 1.02, adoption of the agenda. Before I open that item, is there anyone that did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? Okay, seeing none, then we'll close that. Trustee Satori, will you make a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, Madam President, members of the board, I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda and the addendum with flexibility and with the following change. Reference material has been provided for item 3.09, employment agreement, chief strategy officer.
Thank you. Trustee Cavazos.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes six to zero. We're going to go ahead and move on to 2.01. This is student reports. I'm turning it over to Ms. Sears or... Yes.
Madam President, members of the board, Kirsten Seer for the record. Tonight, I'm proud to continue our new tradition that has made its return to the boarded trustees meeting, student board reports. Tonight, we're pleased to welcome our next two student presenters. One from the Basic Academy of International Studies, representing trustee Stevens, District A, and trustee Asparza Stroffigan in Henderson. And one from Mission High School, representing trustee Vice President Zamora and trustee Johnson. These students are excited to share a few highlights about their school communities and give us a glimpse into the energy, creativity, and spirit that makes their campuses thrive. Please join me in welcoming our student speakers, and we will start with Madison Parisi.
Hi, I am Madison Parisi, and I am currently a senior at Basic Academy of International Studies. I'm a candidate for valedictorian for the graduating class of 2026. I am involved in sports, including varsity soccer of four years, softball of three, and a volunteer soccer coach. I also participate in extracurricular activities such as the Basic Academy Wind on Soluble, Varsity Quiz, Student Council, National Honor Society, and the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. To kick things off, two of my oldest sisters attended Basic, as well as my mother has worked there for 13 years. I will always remember the staff cookout at the football games and being the flyer for my sisters and I's makeshift tier teams. I won't ever forget running around the halls and playing tag with my sisters while my mom runs late for work. I've only had four years at Basic formally, but I have known it for generations. Basic has that effect on most, and all will remember its legacy. Basic has been around since 1942 and was relocated to the location it's currently at since 1972. We have many long-lived traditions that make our school unique from others. This past October, I participated in Paint the Bee, where all the seniors go up to the B on the mountain and paint it. We also have given the name to our student section, the Blue Manatee, and ever since it has stuck. This school year, many changes have happened to our school's physical appearance. Our quad area is receiving a makeover, as well as the cafeteria is being extended to make a bigger area for our students. In addition to our school's physical improvement, we have many programs that stand out. The International Back Laureate is an advanced program that sets students up for the most competitive universities. Classes are college-level courses that challenge students and prepare them for higher education. We have over 20 clubs and performing art programs that are available to all students with a variety of different interests. For example, our Robotist Club has qualified for state, and now we have a Varsity Quiz team, which we haven't had in 10 years. Our choir program recently traveled to Washington, DC. We also have a rock band doing performances at lunch and assemblies. Basic Academy is able to provide its students with a variety of dual-credit, AP, honors, and CTEs courses. I was able to participate in the fashion program for three years, earning my own CTE certificate. I am fortunate enough to be able to have 12 college credits by the time I graduate because of the wide range of opportunities Basic has provided for me and others. We have a range of odd sports, going from cross-country to swimming. Basic's men's volleyball team and softball team have won 4A state titles back-to-back. Our baseball team also won the 5A state title this past year, too, and our dance team is nationally ranked. Although Basic provides students with many opportunities for their future, here are some notable alumni. Harry Reed attended Basic and was the Senator of Nevada from 1987 to 2017. Basic also sent two students to Major League Baseball, Ryan Nelson and Chris Latham. Basic didn't just send students to Major League Baseball, but to the National Football League, who are Henry Rowling and Don Smerek. Basic has proven to be a respected high school, showing its excellence in academics, activities, athletics, and appearance. We strive for high standards so our students can become as successful as they can be. Thank you.
Great job, Madison. And I'd also like to acknowledge that Madison's principal, Mr. Hadavi, is here tonight to root her on. Thank you for being here tonight. And now, we will move on to Mick Hedges, who is a student at Mission High School.
Hello, my name is Mick Hedges. I'm a junior, and I'm a proud student at Mission High School. I was born in Idaho and moved to Las Vegas when I was 10 years old. While Las Vegas has become my home, I still have family in Idaho that I visit often. Family means a lot to me. Prior to Mission, I attended Southwest Career and Technical Academy and also have a sister that goes there who will be graduating this year. At Mission, I serve as a historian on our student council. In this role, I document school events, take photos, and help preserve the history and spirit of our campus. This is my second year at Mission, and during my time here, I've become deeply involved in both the school and recovery communities. I regularly attend AA and NA meetings and have truly valued the opportunity to support and connect with my classmates and peers. Outside of school, I'm involved with an organization called Tin-Hi, also known as APG. It's a safe and supportive place where students can hang out after school, attend recovery meetings, and share meals together. In my free time, I love playing guitar and recording music. My dream is to become a music artist or a producer, because music is my greatest passion. You may be seated. All right, we're going to move on to item 1.02, Adoption of the Agenda. Before I open that item, is there anyone that did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? Okay, seeing none, then we'll close that. Trustee Satori, will you make a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, Madam President, members of the board, I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda and the addendum with flexibility and with the following change. Reference material has been provided for item 3.09, Employment Agreement, Chief Strategy Officer.
Thank you. Trustee Cavazos.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes six to zero. We're going to go ahead and move on to 2.01. This is student reports. I'm turning it over to Ms. Sears or... Yes.
Madam President, members of the board, Kirsten Sears for the record. Tonight, I'm proud to continue our new tradition that has made its return to the Board of Trustees meeting, Student Board Reports. Tonight, we're pleased to welcome our next two student presenters, one from the Basic Academy of International Studies, representing trustee Stevens, District A, and trustee Asparza Stroffigan in Henderson, and one from Mission High School, representing trustee Vice President Zamora and trustee Johnson. These students are excited to share a few highlights about their school communities and give us a glimpse into the energy, creativity, and spirit that makes their campuses thrive. Please join me in welcoming our student speakers, and we will start with Madison Parisi.
Hi, I am Madison Parisi, and I am currently a senior at Basic Academy of International Studies. I'm a candidate for valedictorian for the graduating class of 2026. I am involved in sports, including varsity soccer of four years, softball of three, and a volunteer soccer coach. I also participate in extracurricular activities such as the Basic Academy Wind on Sable, Varsity Quiz, Student Council, National Honor Society, and the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. To kick things off, two of my oldest sisters attended Basic, as well as my mother has worked there for 13 years. I will always remember the staff cookout at the football games and being the flyer for my sisters and I's makeshift tier teams. I won't ever forget running around the halls and playing tag with my sisters while my mom runs late for work. I've only had four years at Basic formally, but I have known it for generations. Basic has that effect on most, and all will remember its legacy. Basic has been around since 1942 and was relocated to the location it's currently at since 1972. We have many long-lived traditions that make our school unique from others. This past October, I participated in Paint the Bee, where all the seniors go up to the bee on the mountain and paint it. We also have given the name to our student section, the Blue Manatee, and ever since it has stuck. This school year, many changes have happened to our school's physical appearance. Our quad area is receiving a makeover, as well as the cafeteria is being extended to make a bigger area for our students. In addition to our school's physical improvement, we have many programs that stand out. The International Back Laureate is an advanced program that sets students up for the most competitive universities. Classes are college-level courses that challenge students and prepare them for higher education. We have over 20 clubs and performing art programs that are available to all students with a variety of different interests. For example, our Robotist Club has qualified for state, and now we have a varsity quiz team, which we haven't had in 10 years. Our choir program recently traveled to Washington, DC. We also have a rock band, doing performances at lunch and assemblies. Basic Academy is able to provide its students with a variety of dual-credit, AP, honors, and CTEs courses. I was able to participate in the fashion program for three years, earning my own CTE certificate. I am fortunate enough to be able to have 12 college credits by the time I graduate because of the wide range of opportunities Basic has provided for me and others. We have a range of odd sports, going from cross-country to swimming. Basic's men's volleyball team and softball team have won 4A state titles back-to-back. Our baseball team also won the 5A state title this past year, too, and our dance team is nationally ranked. Although Basic provides students with many opportunities for their future, here are some notable alumni. Harry Reed attended Basic and was the Senator of Nevada from 1987 to 2017. Basic also sent two students to Major League Baseball, Ryan Nelson and Chris Latham. Basic didn't just send students to Major League Baseball, but to the National Football League, who are Henry Rowling and Don Smerek. Basic has proven to be a respected high school, showing its excellence in academics, activities, athletics, and appearance. We strive for high standards so our students can become as successful as they can be. Thank you.
Great job, Madison. And I'd also like to acknowledge that Madison's principal, Mr. Hadavi, is here tonight to root her on. Thank you for being here tonight. And now we will move on to Mick Hedges, who is a student at Mission High School.
Hello, my name is Mick Hedges. I'm a junior, and I'm a proud student at Mission High School. I was born in Idaho and moved to Las Vegas when I was 10 years old. While Las Vegas has become my home, I still have family in Idaho that I visit often. Family means a lot to me. Prior to Mission, I attended Southwest Career and Technical Academy, and also have a sister that goes there, will be graduating this year. At Mission, I serve as a historian on our student council. In this role, I document school events, take photos, and help preserve the history and spirit of our campus. This is my second year at Mission, and during my time here, I've become deeply involved in both the school and recovery communities. I regularly attend AA and NA meetings and have truly valued the opportunity to support and connect with my classmates and peers. Outside of school, I'm involved with an organization called TinHi, also known as APG. It's a safe and supportive place where students can hang out after school, attend recovery meetings, and share meals together. In my free time, I love playing guitar and recording music. My dream is to become a music artist or a producer, because music is my greatest passion. After high school, I plan to attend trade school to study HVAC, a field that I believe will give me valuable versatile skills I can use anywhere. At Mission, I'm proud to be involved in school events and community outreach. We just completed Celebrating Red Ribbon Week, which focuses on drug and tobacco prevention. This year's theme was Life's a Puzzle, Solve It Drug-Free. Our Spirit Week includes themed days, activities, and service projects that bring our school community together. During Homecoming Week, we partner with Shine a Light, a nonprofit that helps individuals living in the flood channels, by providing hygiene supplies, water, and encouraging notes. It's inspiring to be part of a school that values giving back and supporting others. I also help in our hydroponics room, where we grow and harvest lettuce as a learning experience, donate, and also share with everyone on campus. Next year, I plan to graduate with honors. My time at Mission has taught me so much about community, leadership, and service, and how powerful it can be when people come together to support one another and grow. One of the things that make Mission High School truly special is that we provide on-campus recovery meetings for students. After lunch each day, we gather in the cafeteria and reflect. We use a book called Just for Today, which focuses on daily reflections and humility. Every first Friday of the month, we host a school barbecue, or as some of us like to say, we get our grill on. Everyone pitches in, and it's a fun way to build community and connect. We're also fortunate to have strong partnerships with organizations like The Hub, Project 150, J and Tamika that run the organization, hashtag I Won't Starve, and Batteries Included. These partners go out of their way to support us, helping us learn, hosting activities, and sharing their experiences. And yes, they also bring the best snacks. We have two exciting upcoming events, our gratitude luncheon, where students and staff come together in a potluck style to share a Thanksgiving meal and express what we're thankful for, and our Founder's Dinner, a special tradition where the founders of Mission High School, staff, students, and community members, to celebrate our school's purpose and values. At Mission, we also have four guidance houses, each with its own name and theme centered around recovery. We work together, compete, and challenge one another, but most importantly, we learn and grow together. Most recently, we even held a door decorating contest that brought out everyone's creativity and school spirit. And not to brag, but my house won. In closing, I just want to say how proud I am to be a Mission High School student. Recently, we were recognized at the superintendent's honor roll for increasing our state star rating by two stars. This school has given me opportunities, a sense of belonging, and a community that truly cares. It has also given me the confidence academically due to the attention and help I receive from my teachers. Thank you for supporting schools like Mission that help students like me learn, grow, and build brighter futures.
Great job, Mick. And also Mick's principal, Ms. Nichols, is over there capturing video. And that concludes our reports tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sears. Thank you, Madison. Thank you, Mick. We will now move to Agenda Item 3.0, Consent Agenda Information. Before I do that, is there anyone that did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? That's good. Then Mr. Caruso, if you could let me know if this is for this item or something later on. Thank you, Mr. Caruso. Seeing no other ones interested in the public speaker, Ms. Caitlin, is this one for this item? No? No, okay. Thank you so much. With that, then, having no public comment, I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Trustee Asparza Stroffigan.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. I have a first. Trustee Cavazos.
I will second her motion.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes six to zero. Next, we'll go to trustee Henry. If you could please read the warrants.
Thank you, Madam President. The ratified warrant is listed in the Bill's Payable, Transmittal, and Board Memorandum Number 8-25-26, in the total amount of $212,460,027.25.
Thank you. We'll now move to item 4.0. This is going to be a joint meeting with our Audit Advisory Committee. And so for the trustees that have joined us this year, we have a committee meeting within our board meeting. So you will see us passing the mic to the vice chair and back to me, because we will vote on whatever they present to us. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Thornberry to begin with introductions of committee members. I believe that there are... There's one missing, unfortunately. Oh, and one outside. So we'll wait for them, Mr. Thornberry. No worries. Mr. Thornberry, I'll turn it over to you for introductions before we move on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Board of Trustees. Just for the public's awareness, the Audit Advisory Committee is appointed on a two-year term basis by the Board of Trustees to serve as an advisory subject matter experts on internal audit-related issues. I'll introduce myself first and then pass it down the row for my fellow committee members. My name's Joe Thornberry. I'll be serving as the audit chairman tonight. My background is in fraud and internal audit, fraud investigations and internal audit. I'm a volunteer member of the board. I work full-time for Barclays as the vice president of cyber fraud investigations, as well as am president of the local Las Vegas chapter of the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners. This is my third year on the Audit Advisory Committee, and I reside in Las Vegas in District A.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert, I'm Anna Marie Binder. This is my fourth year on Audit Advisory Committee. I am a stay-at-home mom to six wonderful children, three of whom are still enrolled in the Clark County School District. In my spare time, I chair the Nevada Governor's Council on Developmental Disabilities. And prior to doing all of that, I was a trial paralegal and bring extensive expertise in auditing from not just a forensic standpoint, but an accountability and disbursement arena. So thank you for having us tonight.
Good evening, Board. My name is Jeffrey Share. I am, excuse me, recent retiree of 30 years with Clark County with the Finance Department. I left as the Director of Budget and Finance, and I have an undergraduate degree from the University of Michigan in economics, and I have a master's degree from UNLV in Business Administration with a concentration in accounting.
Thank you. Mr. Thornberry, I know Ms. Hammer is coming in, but do you want to share a little bit about her background and...
Yes, we have two additional members, Josh Robinson, who is excused on a work-related business event tonight, and Elizabeth Hammer, who's a vice president for internal audit at a local casino company.
Wonderful, thank you. And just trustees, remember, these are volunteers for a committee that they serve for us. So let us thank them at the end for their service. We're going to go ahead and move on to 4.01, Adoption of the Agenda. Before I do that, is there anyone that did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? Oh, I see two hand in the back. Mr. Caruso, if you could let me know if it's for this item. Okay, I'm gonna, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the Audit Committee. Mr. Thornberry?
Thank you, Madam President. The Audit Committee does have a quorum, and at this time, we will, I will call for a motion to adopt the minutes.
To adopt the agenda.
The, adopt the agenda.
Anna Binder for the record, so moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing not opposed, motion passes from the Audit Advisory Committee. Turn it over to Madam President.
Thank you. Since they've adopted their agenda, now it's our turn. We would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda of the Audit Advisory Committee. Trustee Biasadi.
Thank you, Madam President. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Agenda Item 4.01, Adoption of the Agenda, Joint Meeting with the Audit Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Trustee Barron.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes six to zero. I'm going to turn it back over to Chair Thornberry.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last Audit Advisory Committee.
For the record, Jeffrey Share, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Anna Binder, friendly amendment, that those are the minutes from our August 8, 2025 meeting, and I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Thornberry. Before you take the vote, I'm going to see if there was anybody that did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card. Don't run down all at once, okay? Close that thing. Go ahead and cast, go ahead.
I'll accept the amendment.
Thank you. All those in favor of the revised amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing not opposed, the motion passes from the Audit Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Now it's our turns, trustees. I will entertain a motion for 4.02. Trustee Biasadi.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to adopt Agenda Item 4.02, Approval of Minutes.
Thank you. Trustee Asparza Stroffigan.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes six to zero. Now we're going to go on to Presentation 4.03. This is not an action item, but it's a presentation of the Annual Independent Auditors Report for the fiscal year of June 30, 2025. And I don't know who wants to begin, but Mr. Dayhoff, is that you, or is that... Yep, okay.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert. I'm Justin Dayhoff, Chief Financial Officer for the record. We have at the table with us Kurt Schlicker, a partner and lead auditor from our independent auditing firm, Ida Bailey. We're also joined, as we discussed, by the volunteer members of our Audit Advisory Committee. As part of Item 4.03, we present the district's financial statements, also known as the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or ACFR. That is ending, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. Our audit is an important opportunity for us as a district to examine the systems and processes on which we rely to ensure proper financial accounting and reporting. Every policy is ultimately a finance policy. There's a cost, even at the status quo, so our ability to rely on and be precise with the underlying financial data on which decisions are made is essential. The audit and our ACFR also provide a natural point of opportunity, thanks in part to the opinion of our independent review, to refine our work, define direction and area of attention and need within the Business and Finance Unit, to offer built-in avenue for continuous improvement. With the thanks to our partners and the team at the PFU who completed thousands of hours in the assembly of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, Mr. Schlicker will now go through the summary of the reports and key items of interest.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Kurt Schlicker, partner with Ida Bailey for the record. I'm gonna, there's a couple of new members of the board today, so I'm going to spend some time, I'll try to keep it brief, but I get very excited about numbers because I'm an accountant. So forgive me, I apologize in advance to everybody that finds numbers not as exciting as I do. As Mr. Dayhoff said, the ACFR, really the process starts for us in May, and it concludes essentially with this board meeting, but it's a multiple-thousand-hour process. There's thousands of hours from us as your auditors, and then there's thousands of hours put into place by the Business and Finance Unit in preparing these figures, responding to our requests. So this is not a small project, it's not a short project, it's not easy. It's a lot of work that takes place over roughly seven to eight months. The scope of this audit, because I get this question a lot, what is an audit? What are you actually looking at? So that's what we're going to try to cover today, to explain that. We are auditing the balances that the district is reporting to the users of the financial statements. So said another way, the district says we have this much cash. We audit to make sure that the amount that you're saying in cash that you have appears reasonable. You say you have this much revenue. We're trying to verify that the revenue that you are saying you have is reasonably accurate. So that is the scope of an audit. We'll talk about some key ratios, some things to pay attention to, but that's what we're going to walk through today. I'm going to reference the page numbers through the 4.03 reference material that I think will scroll through and be shared on the screen, just if you want to follow along. So our opinion starts on page 31, and I like to start with our opinion, because, well, what is it? So our opinion, we gave an unmodified opinion. Now, is that good or bad? Well, an unmodified opinion is the essentially best opinion that we can give, meaning we looked at the financial statements, the balances represented, and we believe that they are materially accurate within reasonable assurance. Doesn't mean that they're correct to the penny, because if we audited to the penny, the audit would go to 100,000 hours instead of a few thousand hours. But they're reasonably, we're reasonably assured that they're materially accurate. We have no modifications to our opinion to believe otherwise. There is a paragraph that you can see at the bottom of that page called Emphasis of a Matter. So what does emphasis of a matter mean? How important is that? Well, this year, the district changed its accounting policy for how it accounts for prepaid items. For those of you more familiar with kind of a commercial setting, how you would record a prepaid asset and then amortize it over future years as it's utilized, in governmental accounting, you have the option of expensing that all in one year, because it's really an expenditure. So once the expenditure is gone and out of fund balance, you know, how do you really manage that? So there's an option to expense it. And the district this year chose to change their policy to expense prepaid items rather than capitalize and amortize them over the years of periods that that prepaid is used for. Hopefully, that kind of makes sense. I can answer questions on that later as you want, but that's what that call-out is for, is for that change in accounting policy. Starting on page 36 is the section of the ACFR called Management's Discussion and Analysis. This is written by management. It's written by the Business and Finance Unit. What the goal of Management's Discussion Analysis is, is to answer the question, why? Why did expenses change? Why did revenues change? Why do you have big swings up or down on certain balances? Management attempts to highlight the causes of those changes, that's the point. It's unaudited. We look at it to make sure there's nothing that is so egregiously wrong that we would have a problem with it, but it's really management's explanation of the why. I'm not going to go through it in detail, I promise. You guys can read it on your own time, but I wanted to explain what Management's Discussion Analysis was. Okay, more to the numbers now, starting on page 54. More to the numbers now, starting on page 54. So 54, this is called the Statement of Net Position, and that is the governmental version of a balance sheet. So those of you familiar with commercial financial statements, this is your assets, your liabilities. We have some government unique terminology called deferred outflows and deferred inflows, but to keep it simple, assets, liabilities, equity. This is a snapshot of the entire district, so it's all district activities at a government-wide level, so not the fund level, not the general fund, not the special education fund, but the district-wide activities. So the district's total net position, um, at the end of the year was 1.7 billion. What does that mean? It means your assets and deferred outflows exceeded your liabilities and deferred inflows by 1.7 billion. Is that good? Is that bad? How do we analyze that? How would I, as an auditor, a numbers person, think about that? I start looking at that and compare it to, on the next page, page 55, your Statement of Activities, which is the worst income statement presented in all of financial accounting, not the school districts, but governmental financial statements. It's a very difficult income statement to comprehend. But you see in that first column, your expenditures, there are your expenses, roughly 5.3 billion in expenses. So I always like to compare, what's our ending net position? 1.7 billion? To what's our expenses? Like, how much of our budget do we have in ending net position compared to what our annual expenditures are? Are we in a healthy spot? So you have 1.7 divided by 5.3, you're roughly, if I do a quick math, roughly a third there. So, that's pretty healthy from a government-wide position. It's not, um, of significant concern when I look at that ratio. That's a very key ratio to consider, especially when we get into the funds too, but that ratio of net position to your annual expenses. Okay? Looking more at the Statement of Activities, um, because it's such a wide statement, on page 56, tries to summarize, oh geez, yeah, tries to summarize the change in net position. So for the year, on a government-wide basis, the district had an increase in net position of 253 million. Okay, so essentially positive net income of 253 million, nothing of, um, major concern there. Moving forward to what I think is probably more useful from a management and, um, an analysis kind of viewpoint, are your governmental funds. Starts on page 57. This is your government fund balance sheet, and really, I like to focus on the general fund because that is the primary operating fund for the district. Doing the same kind of analysis, the general fund has 498 million in ending fund balance. Um, so your assets roughly 819 million, 732 million of that is cash, so highly liquid, which is a relatively good position to be in because you wanna have available liquidity resources, um, as needed. Again, kind of comparing that on a same ratio basis, on page 61, is essentially the income statement for your governmental funds. And the general fund has 2.9 billion in expenditures, but also has 560 million in transfers out. So roughly, we'll call it 3.5, 3.4 billion in expenditures and transfers that the general fund is essentially paying for. So now we're looking at, okay, 498 million compared to 3.4 billion, and that ratio obviously is getting smaller as we get from that government-wide net position. That is still relatively healthy. If you do the math on that, that's roughly 1.7 months in annual budget, which is, um, is healthy, it's not, there's no alarm bells there that I would have. The unique piece for the district is that much of your fund balance is restricted by NRS 388G, there's school carryovers. And when we think about restricted fund balance, you have to use those on those restricted resources. So I, if I flipped back and went back to the balance sheet and looked at what your unassigned fund balance in the general fund was, that's $147 million. So that is essentially general fund that's available for things that come up that you weren't necessarily expecting, uncertain things, things you weren't really planning for, whatever. That unassigned fund balance is only 4%, roughly, of your annual expenditures. I'm not gonna say that's good, bad, or indifferent, that's just a management decision to keep your unassigned fund balance that small, but just recognize that four, only 4% of your general fund budget is essentially available for surprises, if that makes sense what I'm saying. If you're happy with that margin, that's fine, again, it's a management decision, it's a budget policy, there's nothing wrong with that. There is a large balance in restricted carryovers, and that's, that's due to the legislature and Nevada revised statutes, that's not necessarily something that is a fiscal management policy. It's just, again, a key ratio to pay attention to. Okay. Again, I, I promised I would try to keep this brief and not overly confuse everybody, so I'm gonna skip to the notes to explain what that is really quickly, page 67. The financial statements include a section called Notes to the Financial Statements, and this is where there is a tremendous amount of information that is available to the public and to the users of the financial statements, tremendous amount. There is all the district's accounting policies, that's in Note 1. If you're curious on accounting policies, which basically only people like me are, but that's okay, um, that is in Note 1. If we go to page 79, I'm just gonna call out a couple of the footnotes. Page 79, at the very bottom, starts Note 3, which is Deposits and Investments. So if you're curious about the district's, um, investment holdings, the portfolio, the risk with those portfolio, what are your, what's your maturity and ratings and all that fun stuff, Note 3 is a good place to dive in. If we move on to page 90. Page 90 starts Note 8, which is your bonds payable. So if you have questions on, well, what, how leveraged are we? What, what bonds are outstanding? What's the maturity on those bonds? What's our upcoming debt service? What kind of cost of financing are we getting? Meaning, what interest rates are on your bonds? All of that is presented in Note 8. A key, what I would consider, for management at least, consideration to always watch, starting on page 92, is your maturity schedule. So what the maturity schedule says is, well, how much debt service do we have to make over the next couple of years? What do we have to fund? What do we have to be able to pay for from a bond perspective? So for fiscal year '26, you can see there you have $455 million in bond payments between principal and interest that are coming due in fiscal year '26. You accumulate resources for that in your debt service fund, and if we went back to the debt service fund, I'm not going to, but the debt service fund, um, has enough cash essentially to cover two years' worth of bond payments, a little bit more than two years' worth of bond payments, which is a great, healthy position to be in. You never wanna see a situation where your debt service fund has no cash accumulated because then you're worried about making your bond payments. So you're healthy there, um, and in a fair position. Then moving on to, um, page 96. There's, um, kind of two footnotes on here that are of relative importance. Note 10 just gives you a big snapshot of your long-term debt, so whether that's, um, your bonds, or compensated absences, leases, um, those type of items, that just gives you a kind of a high-level snapshot. Note 11 is compliance with Nevada revised statutes. So Nevada revised statutes and compliance thereof are reported in the notes of the financial statements, so if there's any potential violations, that's where that is reported, um, and deficit fund balances. In the following page, Note 12, is any information you wanna learn on PERS. Um, there's a lot of information in there, it's a little overwhelming, but again, just pointing it out, um, for your benefit. Okay, skipping ahead to page 118, I promise I'm almost done. Page 19, or 118 at the bottom, has Note 19, which is a restatement. When the district changed accounting policies to expense pre-pays, um, in accounting terms, that requires a restatement to beginning fund balances because there was a change in accounting policy, so we had to get rid of all those pre-pays that were previously capitalized and expensed, so. So that's all that's trying to explain, is that due to that change in accounting policy, beginning balances were restated essentially to remove pre-pays from your beginning balances. Okay. The next, I said, I guess, essential, um, document that I would consider is your Budget to Actual Performance, which starts on page 120. So, the district spends a lot of time, obviously, budgeting. Um, that's a key management function, is to budget for the upcoming year. You budget your revenues, you budget your expenditures, you wanna make sure you maintain health. The general fund budget actual provides a really good retrospective review on, well, how did we do compared to budget? That's important. Uh, what kind of fiscal responsibility did we have in adherence to the budget? So, if we look at total revenues, total revenues were budgeted for the general fund at 3.3 billion. They ended at 3.32 billion, so essentially you outperformed budget by $17 million. That is very accurate budgeting from a revenue standpoint. I mean, if you think about it, you budgeted at $3.3 billion and you're within 17 million. That's pretty accurate, fine-tuned budgeting. If we skip kind of towards the end of the general fund statement on page 126, you'll see the final budget for expenditures was 3.245 billion, the actual spend was 2.9 billion. So you spent less than budget by 326 million. Okay? So, um, I think that's a good thing, because if we look on the following page, if you would've spent every dollar of your budget, and your revenue would've come in at budget, your ending fund balance would've been 204 million, which we talked earlier, you have over $3 billion in expenditures, so to only have 200 million left in ending fund balances is pretty thin. So, underspending budget and being responsible there to the tune of $300 million essentially, you had an ending fund balance that was better than budget by 294 million, which, again, if we're talking margins on your annual spend, I just want you to pay attention to that, because 200 million on a three-point-some-odd-billion spend is, is a thin margin, so you, you really need to have strong management controls there to watch that. Make, hopefully that makes sense. Okay? Page 156 starts the supplementary schedule, I'm not gonna go through any of this in detail, I'm just gonna point it out. If you wanna see prior-year information, if you wanna see other budget information about the other district's funds, I focused on the general fund because that's the primary fund, but if you wanna look at federal projects, special education, food service program, you can look at all that supplementary information at your leisure. I'm happy to answer questions on those if you have them, but, um, I just wanted to point out where that, um, information lives. Page 238. This is statistical information, this is unaudited by us. The district submits for, um, it's called a GFOA certificate, it's Excellence in Financial Reporting. Um, it's a great award to apply for. Um, the district has been awarded this certificate for many years in a row, which is something to be proud of, um, by the Business and Finance Unit. Part of achieving that certificate is the publication of a statistical section that has a lot of different ratios and key information on a 10-year trend. This, again, is unaudited, um, you know, we don't audit things like what's your school enrollment and stuff like that, that's just not the scope of our audit, that's why it's unaudited, but that information is in there, it's prepared by management to, again, read at your leisure. Okay. Now getting back to probably what many of you are interested in, what were the results of the audit from an internal control standpoint? Did we find anything in the audit? So our internal control report, um, uh, it goes to page 277. So, I just wanna explain this to provide context. We don't give an opinion on internal controls, we report internal control matters that come to our attention. So as we perform the audit, if we find errors, if we have adjusting journal entries, if we have issues that crop up, we report those, but I don't report an opinion on the effectiveness of the district's internal controls, I just say, hey, here are the matters that came to our attention. This year, we did have, um, two matters that came to our attention as a result of the financial statement audit. Those matters are reported as 2025-001, which was reported as a material weakness, and 2025-002, which was reported as a significant deficiency. Even though significant deficiency sounds bad, it's the least severe of the findings, the material weakness is actually more severe, to put it into context. So to go through those relatively briefly, on page 279 is, is finding 2025-001. I'm not gonna read it word for word, um, I'll just say in general what happened. We look at the district's capital asset balances, right? So what are your, what's your building, what's your equipment, vehicles, you know, anything else that you have? During our audit procedures, we found that construction in progress was understated by $109 million, and so, when we discussed that with management, went over it with management, they ultimately agreed that it was understated by $109 million. They made the adjustment in the financial statements, so the financial statements are accurate, but it was an adjustment that we found that we asked them to correct. Okay? So that is that matter. And then, finding 2025-002, um, during our audit procedures over grant revenue, um, we noticed an unusual relationship between expenses and revenues, and we asked questions on that, and ultimately determined that roughly $2.3 million in payroll bonuses, accrued payroll, were not recorded in the correct fiscal year. So they were recorded in 2026, needed to be recorded and accrued back as a 2025 expenditure, and that kinda had a domino effect on a couple other balances, um, that affected grant revenue, but essentially it was just recorded in the wrong period. It wasn't that it wasn't recorded, it wasn't that it was the wrong amount, it was just wrong period. Okay? So those are our two financial statement findings. For members of the Board that are more familiar with years past, we usually have a single audit section. Just briefly to mention the single audit, if you're not aware, the, um, we're required to audit federal compliance every year for the district, and that audit is predicated on a document that's published by the Office of Management and Budget at a federal level. So the President's Administrative Office publishes an audit program essentially for auditors to follow every year. That has been delayed and has not been published for June 30, 2025 yet. And so, no CPA firms in the country that perform federal compliance audits can issue an opinion on federal compliance yet, because the audit program to actually audit federal compliance has not been released yet. Typically, this is released in sometime between April and July of every year. It was slated for release in April. Um, not, I'm not gonna get into the necessarily politics of it, but the President's Office pulled back the release of the compliance supplement for additional legal reviews, um, and has since not released the compliance supplement since it was pulled back from release. The AICPA, which of course we're a member of, released guidance to all member firms saying you're not allowed to issue a single audit until you have the audit program to issue. There is still no ETA on its release, so I can't tell you, oh, we'll get it done in three weeks or three months, there's no ETA on the release, um, obviously with the shutdown that, you know, obviously had an impact on the release of the compliance supplement. We don't know when it will be released. When it is released, we will complete the single audit procedures for the district, and then we'll have to come back before you all to, um, report on the results. and then we'll have to come back before you all to report on the results of the federal compliance audit. But I couldn't do it here today, because, well, we don't have the compliance supplement to be able to do the work. So I know I covered a 200-plus-page document as briefly as I possibly could, but maybe it was overwhelming anyway, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Thank you. And I wanted to ask legal counsel a question. Do we let Mr. Thornberry and his committee members ask a question first? Okay, please, please proceed, and then we'll go after you.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'll open it up to the Audit Advisory Committee for any questions. Do any members have a question?
Jeffrey Scher for the record. I just wanted to state, as the new member on this committee, that I thought that the MDA that was, excuse me, created by the Finance Department was an excellent job. For a new person, or any person looking to understand the operation, I thought it was excellent. Gave a great, top-to-bottom example of everything that was going on. And for somebody who is not as familiar with the operation, anybody from the public to read this would get a really good idea of the operation of the school district. So I was very pleased and very thankful, very helpful for that. Based on my background and my experience, has been more on the budget side, so I spent a lot of time looking at that. I was looking at a couple of the things, and I have to tell you that I was very impressed with the debt position of the organization. The budgeting was tremendous, as you mentioned, that there were some excellent things. I did a lot of what you did, ran a couple of quick ratios, things like that, everything really looked good. The two areas of concern that you had for findings, I don't think that it was anything that it was, especially the payroll, that is something that is so understandable that just with timing issues with your June into July, and grants are so challenging to deal with, so totally understandable. I think that the response from the organization regarding the other finding regarding the CIP is totally understandable, and I'm very comfortable with that. I'm kind of looking at some of the revenue numbers, and I apologize for not getting you this ahead of time, so I completely understand. The COVID-era funding is now gone away, and I'm kind of curious as to what impact you expect that that's going to have to the district in the future, what kind of programs are funded through that, and how that's going to go.
Justin DeHuff, Chief Financial Officer, for the record. Thank you, member, for the question. The majority of... There were three tranches of elementary and secondary school emergency reform funding through three main pieces of federal legislation. First with the CARES Act, then the Coronavirus Rescue Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, and then following that, the American Rescue Plan Act, that being the largest. Same with the three tranches, they had three different performance periods on those grant programs. Any federal awards, further, any federal awards administered through the United States Department of Education are subject to the Tidings Amendment, which allows for a 27-month performance period on most grants, in part because of the misalignment between the federal fiscal year, which runs October 1 to September 30, and what end up being school district fiscal years, which often, though not exclusively, run July 1 to June 30 of a calendar year. So to that end, and forgive the additional context, both SIR 1 and SIR 2 have completed their liquidation timeline, so we're in the third tranche right now that we have and fully expect to liquidate those resources. The district, over the course of that time, recognizing that timeline, took action in a couple of different ways. From one, providing internal guidance at the onset, to where possible, avoid reoccurring investments with those one-time funds. And then, in addition to that, over the last couple of years, the district's district-wide strategic implementation framework has been used to make decisions over the sustainability and the effectiveness of those continuing investments forward.
I was just concerned, and you clarified that with that they're one-time things, that there's no programs that are going to be lost because of this revenue, that obviously is just one-time revenue, so that's great. Could you explain, it seems to me, and again, I'm just getting what I am off of the news, things like that, about falling enrollment and the impact on operations? Obviously, the majority, your major revenue source is coming from the state regarding the number of students, and obviously the expenditures thereof with the schools, and how that is going to, how do you see that into the future, and where that's going to go?
Justin DeHuff, again, for the record. We continue to track the district's enrollment season over season, and we'll continue to project that for the upcoming budget cycle. I know the district as a whole, and part of, in service of becoming a destination district, is actively working and being attentive to our enrollment and how we are driving that and moving that forward as a district. Because in part, as you note, more than 85% of our revenue comes from the state, which is driven by enrollment. Notably too, though, it is a per pupil enrollment, right? So where we expect changes to happen is usually proportional to the enrollment that occurs. So where those changes would exist, we at least have the ability to understand what that revenue looks like because of the state's people-centered funding plan, and to hopefully use that to plan accordingly.
Very good, I appreciate it. I, as the audit representative, spent a lot of time on the general fund, and so that was really my area of concentration. Your estimates were great. The real estate transfer tax, room tax, is a very difficult number. Obviously, nobody knows what the fluctuations are going to go on on the strip and how that is coming through, so the numbers came through great. I was very impressed with that. I'm very pleased to see that the property taxes, I mean, it was 10% increase year over year, and that's amazing for what's going to come through as basically, I believe it's the second-largest revenue source that you have coming into the district. So that shows well that the community is doing well, that the property taxes continue to go up, which will continue to get the revenue in that you need. The investment income, obviously, is very difficult. I'm kind of curious as what your philosophy is regarding how you develop an investment income number? I know it's very challenging, obviously, in a time of moving interest rates.
No, thank you again for the question, member. So, in the district, we have an investment committee that meets regularly, and we do so in part to make sure that we are steering the ship with regard to those investment decisions accordingly. We have, we also operate within board policy and regulation as to the types and assets that we are allowed to invest in. With that, currently, we partner with two primary firms who hold our assets, 95% of which are held in one. In addition to getting weekly updates, our Treasury Office maintains a close working relationship with them, so that beyond the investment committee, we're not waiting for the investment committee to update and ascertain our balances and projections. Frankly, we are checking our portfolio balances weekly.
I'm going to stop for now. I just wanted to spend a little bit of time on the revenue, because I think the revenue is so important, obviously, is the way to start out with this, so I'll defer for the moment, if that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Opening it up to any other members of the committee. Member Hammer.
Member Hammer, can you provide a little more color behind the noted material weakness and what transpired?
Yes, happy to, member. Thank you for the question. So with regard to the material weakness, and again, for everybody, the material weakness is the underreported 100, approximately $109 million in construction, in progress expenditures. That stems from an accounting systems change that we made last year, pushing through a patch through our internal accounting system. And in so doing, and recognizing that we were putting in a patch, we created a secondary report to track that information, so that we maintained a balance, not necessarily trusting the patch to go through. So we implemented that accordingly. At the end of the year, though, what we did not do and have a process in place to do is to reconcile those two, to make sure that we were not, that we were in fact going to make sure that that ad hoc report does indeed match what accruals have posted and are reflected in our end balances for and out of our accounting system. So for that reason, we have added both the control and the compliance and reasonability check to make sure that that does not happen again.
Member Binder, follow-up question?
Thank you, since we're on the subject. Could somebody just describe, for those listening, with regard to that $109 million, what testing procedures were utilized in finding that and supporting all of that?
Thank you, member Kurt Schlicker with Aid Bailey for the record. During our audit, we do a lot of different ratio tests, we do a lot of different sampling procedures, et cetera. One of the ratio tests we look at and relationships that we look at is comparing capital outlay expenditures that are recorded in the funds to capital asset additions on government-wide, because I think we can agree that if you have a capital outlay expenditure, it should be similar to capital asset additions. And so during that ratio analysis, we identified a variance of approximately $110 million that was unreconciled and going in unusual direction, meaning you had $110 million more in capital outlay expenditures than you did have capital asset additions. And so we said, well, what's causing this variance? And so that ultimately led down the path of identifying the understatement.
Thank you. Any other members have any questions? Member Hammer? Thank you. Member Binder?
Thank you so much. Okay, so I have quite a few, and thankfully, fellow members have asked quite a few already, so they've been asked and answered, but I'm trying to stay on like one focus. I had a focus track, but here we go. So, since we're going along that route, what internal control deficiencies, if any, were significant enough to be communicated beyond management, if any? And do they have any comparison to findings from previous years?
Thank you again, Kurt Schlicker with Aid Bailey for the record. So all findings that are important to communicate beyond management are included in the audit report. That's a requirement under government audit standards. So 2025-001 and 02 are the only findings that we considered important enough to communicate beyond management, so they're inclusive there. As far as comparison to prior years, last year we had one finding over interest receivable and the recording of essentially some investment income. And then the year before that, we had a couple of findings as well. I would say the performance is similar to prior years. To provide some context, one or two findings at an operation the size of the school district is not unusual in any way, nor is it evidence of poor performance. I audit many large governments, and those larger governments have sometimes findings in double digits, meaning 10 or 20. And so having a couple is not evidence of poor performance. You are a very large school district, you have a lot going on. One or two findings, as long as it's not, you know, fraud, waste, and abuse-type items, is generally not too egregious or poor performance. It's to be expected.
Thank you. And then, can you explain how those are tracked and progress and resolution of those corrective items occurs?
Thank you for the question, member. Justin DeHuff, CFO, for the record. Internal within the unit, we've implemented progress monitoring, so that we are both checking in on the compliance, but also making that a course of our regular business, not just something that we wait as a course of year-end close to arise. And that would be every two weeks, member.
Ms. Binder, we'll take a break from, and I'll ask, related to cybersecurity, what systems and reforms of technology upgrades are being considered to prevent reoccurring capital reconciliation issues?
Thank you for the question, member. Again, Justin DeHuff, for the record. I want to note that the issue that we had with the posting with SAP was not a cybersecurity issue, it was just a patch issue, a programming patch that went in with the code. You know, we maintain our cyber and risk protocols as we have previously, with regard to the exposure here for this internally. We are making sure right now, we actually have, in the question period, for an enterprise resource planning request for proposal. So actually, as a district, we are staring into the wonderful sunrise of implementing, selecting, and ultimately implementing a new enterprise resource planning system, which is the underlying accounting system on which all this relies, as well as additional modules. So I would say that there, we are on the horizon with more to come, but again, because we are in the review period, that's about all I can comment on.
Thank you. Turning it back over to Ms. Binder.
Okay, thank you. Actually, you know what, I'll just pass to the board at this time.
Thank you. Any other members with any additional questions? Madam President, we'll turn it back over to the Board of Trustees.
Thank you so much. Trustee Stevens.
Hi there. So I have a few questions, but I'm going to try not to take over, because I want to make sure my colleagues have time to ask their questions as well. So, one of the things that you mentioned was the $147 million that was unassigned. Just for clarification, the $147 million that makes up just 4%, is that actual or budgeted?
Thank you, Kurt Schlicker with Aid Bailey for the record. So that's your actual unassigned at the end of the year. When we think about fund balance, we're taking assets less your liability, so what's left over after that? And again, the district is significantly impacted by NRS 388-G, which talks about school carryovers and your restricted fund balances. So when I talk about the unassigned fund balance, I'm essentially talking about your flexibility in your funding and what you want to do with that, because the restricted fund balance is already spoken for. So, yes, that's actual. Okay.
If I could add, trustee, that ending fund balance, the parameters around that are prescribed both in, in part in our own regulation in 3110, but also through NAC, Nevada Code, which requires us to have a certain minimum and maximum ending fund, unassigned ending fund balance year over year. So we, our policy sets it at 2% of our previous year budget. As far as the NAC, it's as far as previous year revenue goes, that sets the minimum. And we are and have been working toward the 4.25%, which is what that $147 million ends up at. That is consistent with the previous year. And one thing I would just add for additional context, that is also a number that our rating agencies, for example, use when they are assessing our credibility and our outlook and our forecast. They continue to actually push us for more in that. The cap, as far as NAC goes, before having to actually contribute additional fund balance back to the state general fund, is 16 or 16.6%. I don't want to misspeak on that, so my apologies.
Thank you for clarifying, very helpful. Yeah, it really is. Okay, so, just two more questions. On page 61, I just caught, like, my eye just caught this as we were going through, because we were going through a lot of pages very quickly, so just, again, a little bit of clarification. When I go down to, when I go down here, I see, it looks like we have a deficiency in special education funding of about $542 million. Is that, am I reading that correctly? And is that coming, that's state funds?
Thank you for the question, trustee. So, part of this is how the state administers PCFP. So they provide, and we actually have to transfer that over into special education accordingly, so that reflects, apart those transfers.
So what I'm trying, like, what I'm trying to understand, like, because, you know, we go to the legislature and hope that, you know, they'll give us more money, especially for these programs, is, what I'm trying to understand is, are we not getting enough? Is that what this is, or is it a transfer issue?
So, thank you, trustee, for the question. The transfer here doesn't reflect trying to further subsidize special education funding with the general fund to go above what PCFP is providing. It reflects the methodology by what... It reflects the methodology by which the state provides the funding and the format, and that we then have to move the funding into a different fund code. When we do, that shows as a transfer, even though that's allotted and allocated as special education funding. So this is just tracing the funding as we get it from the state, and then we are moving special education funding that we're given out of the general fund into special ed, but we're not taking, it's not.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Okay, and then last question on page 92. One of the things, and I know somebody mentioned the concern with, you know, declining enrollment, which always affects the budget, right? But if we look at the bond, and you say, okay, so we've got, we're in a good position because we've got two years' worth of bond payment, if you would, to cover us. But when we get down to the further years, like 2031 to 35, 2036 to 41, so this obviously, like my little red flags go off. So is the district preparing, and I would hope that we are, but I just want to, I just want clarification here, is the district preparing for these upcoming payments? Like, are we, are we putting more money aside for these future large payments, especially considering that our, our income, if you would, is declining?
Thank you for the question, trustee. So part of the reason for the change here has to go with the change in our bonding authority and when that goes. So you'll notice that currently our bonding authority goes through 2035. And so part of the range here is also how we anticipate and what we anticipate potentially releasing for debt in those last couple of years. I do want to, before going to 2031 and 35, too, to your point, we do currently have more than four times revenue to cover our costs already within the fund. So right now, we can absorb additional costs. We have a four-time multiplier in terms of our debt service and the availability and funding for that fund, or to pay for those costs. So even through 2030, you remain, our debt service costs continue within that threshold. And then 2030 onward, this will be the period that we are currently working toward now as we look forward to our next bond issue.
Thank you. Trustee Johnson.
Yeah, I'm just going to use the microphone as closest, so this is trustee Zamora, but thanks for that. All right, so I, because you just asked that question, I'm going to actually go along the same line of questions. One of the wonderings I had was around the ways that our expenditure accounts, you know, all of those went up this past year, but the main driver to that were negotiated salary increases. And I would imagine that those negotiated salary increases will continue to go up like personnel, 85% of our budget, year-over-year, those costs will get more expensive. How do we, how do we ensure that we're able to keep ratios reasonable, especially, again, declining enrollment is something we want to combat, but even when, once we become a destination district, there'll just be fewer students for us to educate. And I know, I imagine we'll have a proportionate number of adults to those students as well, but like, are there concerns around the long-term, like drawouts of increasing expenditures with a limited number of students that will be able to be educated, which means a limited number of, amount of revenue that's available?
Thank you for the question, trustee. So first, always a concern in our ability to project and be nimble is critical, both as a system, but within the Business and Finance Unit, so that we have options and scenarios for which we can plan over the course of different enrollment scenarios in the coming years. All that being said, we have and we were mindful of the next couple of fiscal years. We know one of the advantages of the biennium in being able to have at the very least two years of known appropriation, the ability to make decisions around collective bargaining that do not otherwise tie us to or put us in a structural deficit position outside of known revenue for the next two years. Some of that is indeed inclusive of revenue beyond the people-centered funding plan. So as we talked about with the bargaining process, Senate Bill 500 this year from the 83rd legislative session, provided an additional $86.9 million in each of fiscal's 26 and 27 to support salary increases for three of our bargaining units. That was in addition to and not a part of the people-centered funding plan. And in all of our agreements, too, we speak to our ability to work toward navigating at the next legislative session for what we need. For now, we continue to project with the base that we have at the $9,501 per pupil. And in the time being, with the resources we have, we are also continuing to work with our principals and our teams to identify, how do we make sure in a time of resource constraint that we are at minimum, allocating our resources efficiently to support the instructional programs of our schools, while we do continue to have long-term projections and maintain budgetary backstops like 4.25% or more as we go? Because those, and maintaining our financial health continues to be critically important. It can be tempting to dip into that, but our long-term debt costs, our ability to stay solvent as a district, really pivot on that whole having strong control, being nimble with our principals, but also being candid with what our needs are going to be in the years ahead.
So then, so what I heard was, one, making sure that we have a short-term plan towards, like short-term eye to the legislature, which will allow for us to advocate for more funds; two, making sure that we put controls in place with our principals so that they're being, you know, money-wise effectively. And then third, just, is there, are there plans then to, you know, if the cap for that fund is 16.6 or 16%, which would be like, what, $400 million or something to that, to that effect? Right? Like, so that's a large amount of money? Like, do we have, I mean, what, are we thinking about being more aggressive sooner so that if we don't have support from outside bodies to help increase our revenue, we can, we can at least feel more comfortable with our plans?
Thank you for the question, trustee. Districts throughout the state of Nevada have a different amount heading into that 16% year-over-year. In terms of large districts nationwide, our amount tends to be both at average and trending towards slightly above average. 6% right now is about, when we look at large urban school districts, we talk about as a goal, because in part, there's a tension then between, here are the resources in our general fund, but these are also appropriated to serve our students. And so how do we maintain fiscal solvency while also continuing to steer towards our instructional priorities?
Yeah, okay. All right, and then the very last thing, you mentioned that other, other large government agencies might have findings in the double digits or up towards 20s. Can you share what the industry averages for large, for a large government entity in terms of findings? You know, it sounds like we were far below industry standard. And then if we are, you know, above industry standard or near industry standard with the number of findings, do we have corrective action plans that we need to, that we trigger almost immediately?
Thank you, Member Kurt Schlicker with Ida Bailey for the record. So I can't speak necessarily on an industry average because I haven't, you know, obviously analyzed that. I can speak from my experience of the jobs that I'm the engagement partner on. I would say that maybe to rephrase how I answer the question, I would put the school district in the top tier of performance and maturity of their internal controls with respect to the clients that, you know, I service. So if I was to put them in, you know, below average, average, and above average, the school district would be in the above-average category and are high performers, at least from my perspective and my client base. So that's maybe a better way to phrase and put it.
I hope that all the ears are listening. We're a high performer. We're above average. So just throwing you a softball. At least I hope it threw you a softball. All right, you all, thanks for letting me indulge.
Thank you. Trustee Barron.
Yeah, thank you very much. You know.
Thank you very much. There we go. Did the wrong way there. You know, I really appreciate this, and I read a few over the, a few of the reports over the city of Las Vegas. And this always reminds me of like, you know, I'm a big Star Trek fan. And we're sitting there getting, during the frenetic part of the episodes, there's always a thing where Scotty or Geordi La Forge, they're doing the techno babble stuff where they're talking about the field harmonics of the warp drive, you know, and out of balance and out of sync. And you swear you can follow along with them, but you really have no idea what you're saying. But on this one, I actually thought I could almost understand what you're saying, which is pretty good. So this is great techno babble that you made it. Hey, you guys should write for Star Trek, you know? It's, they've been going downhill a little bit anyhow, so I'm sure you could do great. But all kidding aside, just for, I know the trustee asked, you know, what is the industry standard? Well, just for comparison's sake, over the city of Las Vegas, we nearly lost our charter a few years ago because we went down, we couldn't even make the 8%. And we had dropped, we had dropped our ending fund balance, you know, that we actually had to go to state and actually justify that. We took it down to 8%, and we almost didn't make that. And we would have, we were like three weeks out from actually losing our charter. So just for, just for comparison's sake, we're actually in a pretty, I was going to, my big question was, you know, to get through where, you know, where Captain Kirk just says, darn it, Scotty, just give me, you know, can you beat me up, right? I was going to ask, you know, where we at with our ending fund balance, but you've already answered that. And, and again, you know, at 4.25, it doesn't sound like a whole lot, but when you have almost $4 billion worth of stuff that you're moving, that's quite a bit. One thing I couldn't find, does the auditing process, do we actually come with findings? Do we actually come with, what I like to say, do we actually have an analysis of how we got here with these findings? And any, does our, does the audit process also include recommendations, like for future? And by the way, for us, there were some things that we did, like, we couldn't even afford to hire anybody. So they were like unhired positions, you know, that wound up, you know, building us up here and there, but you know, I'm not, I'm not suggesting anything over here, but does, do we get an analysis, you know, as to how we got here and how we can stay in the, in green, how we stay in with the green ink? Green ink is the good one, right? Yeah, green is good. You see, I learned a little bit while I was going along.
All right, thank you, Member Kurt Schlicker with Ida Bailey for the record. I'll address a couple of those comments and components, and then maybe Mr. DeHaas will take over from there. Regarding the audit process, you know, I joke that I love numbers and I, you know, and that type of stuff, but I take, you know, our responsibility very seriously. And I guarantee you that the members of the Business and Finance Unit behind me know that I take it very seriously because we have a lot of meetings and a lot of conversations throughout the audit. And I, they think I grow them pretty hard, so I'm sure they would speak to that. But whenever we have a potential issue, there's a significant amount of time that's spent on that issue. I would say each finding probably has anywhere from 20 to 40 hours spent just analyzing that finding and going through all the steps and processes, depending on the complexity of it. And so during that time, we obviously have a lot of conversation with management on internal controls to put in place, different ratios to pay attention to, different checks and balances, whatever it may be. Ultimately, what's reported in the audit is the more formal communication of, you know, we recommend you enhance your internal controls to address this potential weakness. But there's probably 20 hours of conversations behind that that's held with management for how to specifically implement those internal controls and what the specific internal controls may be. So yes, there's a process. Yes, we discuss it with management. Ultimately, you know, we don't want a 30-page finding that's explaining all of that, so we keep it brief in the written finding, but there's, there's a pretty extensive process behind the scenes.
Thank you. Trustee Beassadi.
Thank you, Madam President.
Sorry, Mr. DeHaas, which one?
Thank you, trustees. Nothing further to add.
Okay. Trustee Beassadi.
Thank you, Madam President. You have listed in the bottom of your findings, see the corrective action plan for steps to be taken. Does that plan eventually come before the board?
Kurt Schlicker with Ida Bailey for the record. I believe it's the next agenda item.
Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for the presentation, and I appreciate my trustees' questions, too, because they answered a lot. So my question was with the page 280, the employee pay, was this related to the Excel sheet that was a ridiculous 40,000 column, 40,000 row Excel sheet that had to deal with employee pay?
Trustee, thank you for the question. So the, this, in this case, is the significant deficiency associated with the Senate Bill 231 resources. These were about $2.3 million in payments that were for our staff. These were monies that were awarded in the last biennium for hard-to-fill our staff positions. The district fully paid out the entirety of that award within the year. What happened with this one, so this is not related to the salary projections and rate and step calculations. The issue here is timing and sequence with the end of the year. Our grant periods, performance periods, oftentimes, as I mentioned earlier, they don't align to the fiscal year. So our system allows for things to post across June and July as necessary. However, in this case, those funds were, and those payments were in June, which is the previous fiscal year. And so they should have been recorded in June rather than July, which, because it's June and July, even a matter of a couple of days, it's a different fiscal year. And so what this is, is it's bringing those payments back correctly to be reflected in fiscal year 2025, but that's specific to hard-to-fill resources. Those were fully distributed, and it is not related to step salary calculations and projections with staff more broadly.
Perfect, thank you. And were they, was it just like it was postmarked, or, I'm trying to understand why, why weren't they in June versus July?
Thank you for the question, trustee. So just because I, let's say I have a pay stub that said, I get paid today, just because I get paid today, it doesn't mean that's necessarily reflected or recorded within the same month or the same fiscal month, depending on the type of grant, the reason for the pay, how that's allocated, the time period for the pay, et cetera. So, and even then, portions of pay, like fringe, that may be accrued and posted later. And so for that reason, it was part of our regular salary accruals, and so they were paid out normally. That would typically go and post as per usual in that month. The challenge is those should not have been able to do so just because, again, that funding ended in June of 2025.
Got it. And has the system caught up to, for future year, fiscal years, have we been able to correct the system process?
Thank you for the question, trustees. We've already implemented a 21-day review process on the request for reimbursement. In addition to that, and in addition to training for the staff, we're also working on, more broadly, bringing our year-end close procedures in line more with our grant fiscal and our regular accounting teams to help bridge that gap more systematically.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Barron.
Thank you again, Madam Chairwoman. Yeah, actually, that was a good, that was a good question. It's, it's these things where, you know, monies that, if they're not spent within your fiscal year, it wreaks havoc, of course, you know, with our accountants, right? So I totally get it. Just earlier today, I just happened to be part of another board, right, with flood control, and we changed one of our policies there to where, I'm sure you probably even watched it, because it's, there's a financial thing, and I know you're sitting there watching all the financial stuff everywhere else in the city. But we just passed a, I think brilliant, where if you have, of course, accounts payable, we now have a system to where, you know, we actually have a deadline for, for anyone who does business with the, with the, with the flood control district. They don't, if they don't get it, I, I should remember what the dead, what the cutoff date is, right? But, but I guess in the past, it's another one of these deals where it provides, it caused a lot of headaches, you know, for us. And again, like any government agency, we deal in millions, we don't, well, sometimes it gets a hundred thousand, but usually in millions, especially with these capital improvement projects. Do we have something, a policy within our school district where we also have a cutout, a cutoff date where if you don't get your, your stuff in at a certain time, you know, you may not get paid?
Thank you for the question, trustee. We have a number of different policies, yes, depending on the year-end close, the type of expense, whether it's, for example, purchasing, for, you know, purchasing cards and when those post, or for example, when a contractor has to submit an invoice at the end of the fiscal year in order for it to be recorded. So for example, they have until 60 days, forgive me, till after the fiscal year. So we actually receive invoices and are reconciling books up until essentially the day, a day or two before our auditors arrive. Frankly, we normally have had the pre-conference while we're still closing the books for that reason. So yes, there are dates. They differ slightly depending on the type of expense, the unit, internal or external, but it is those, those, they are those very procedures that we are looking at assessing for that year-end close to bring into line.
I'm very happy to hear that. Fiscal accountability is one of the main charges of this board, and I'm happy to hear that you're developing new things to keep us in line. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much. That ends the questions for 4.03. This is not an action item, so we're going to, oh, sorry.
Member Binder had one additional question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I was crossing off my list because...
Thank you, Madam President. I was crossing off my list, because the ones I didn't ask, you guys did, but there is one left unasked. So do we have an update on the expected completion and submission for the delayed single audit?
Yeah, thank you, Kurt Schlicker with Ida Bailey for the record. So again, earlier I mentioned there's no ETA on the issuance of the OMB compliance supplement. So I can't really give an ETA on when we're going to complete it, because I don't know when the audit procedures are going to be released. However, I will provide some additional context, which I think you're asking for, is, once the compliance supplement is released, how long is it going to take to finish those procedures? Forgive me, I'll provide a little bit more context to that. The single audit for firms all across the country, essentially for June 30th year-ends, is performed between, and issued between August and January. So let's call that five months' worth of work that's issued in a relatively steady workflow across those five months. So now, if we can imagine a scenario where the compliance supplement is issued at one time, and all those entities that have five months of delayed single audits all want their audit done at the exact same time. And on top of that, we have quality control procedures. We don't just, one person just doesn't sign off and said, oh yeah, this looks good, and it goes out the door. We have multiple layers of review and quality control. And so I'll just speak to our firm, and the school district, the school district goes through, you know, our engagement team review, my review, and then an independent third party that isn't involved with the engagement also reviews our work to make sure we're followed standards and have good quality. Well, they're going to get all five months' worth of single audits all at the same time. So there's going to be some backlog there to work through that, just by the nature of the scheduling this year. So I would preliminarily estimate, and don't hold my feet to the fire, that it's going to take somewhere between four to eight weeks from when the compliance supplement is released to completion of the school district's single audit. And that's, you know, trying to build in, we don't know if there's going to be changes in the compliance supplement. We've already performed 1,000, you know, 1,000 hours' worth of procedures, but we're doing that based on preliminary drafts, on prior year considerations. We don't know what changes are going to be in the compliance supplement, so we've got to true all of that up once it comes out. So I hesitate to give a date, but I would say probably you're looking at maybe March timeframe. And again, that's not a guarantee. I'm just trying to give you context and perspective on potential there.
And if I could as well, Ms. Binder, once that's done, we have within 30 days to bring back before the board. The federal single audit filing deadline is March 31st. As a result, we are unsure if and to what extent OMB will grant an extension to that. At this point, though entirely speculative on my part, I would anticipate and fully expect that, given the timeline and given what position every audit firm in the country will be in. It is entirely speculation, though. The big piece on that timeline is that 30-day loop on the backend.
Thank you. Turning it back over to Anna President.
Awesome. Thank you. That completes item 4.03. As I said, it's not an action item, so we will move to 4.04. This is an action item, the independent auditor's narrative report of recommendations and district responses to the recommendations. Before I open up that item, is there anyone that did not get an opportunity to complete a public speaker card? Okay, seeing none, I'll close that and turn it over to Mr. DeHaaf for the presentation.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert, again, Justin DeHaaf, Chief Financial Officer, for the record. Item 4.04 is the actual document that the committee and the board will take action on regarding the acceptance of the work here. As Mr. Schlicker noted, there were two findings. I'll review those again here. The first, the largest material finding, was the underreported $109 million construction progress expenditures. That issue came from our accounting system failing to properly post accrued payments after a new system update was made. The facility and bond fund financial management department did properly track those expenditures and had a full report, but did not reconcile those ad hoc reports with the SAP data, resulting ultimately in underreported amount. As I noted, a new control is already in place for that, and we will continue to track. The second filing was associated with the $2.3 million in grant funding from Senate Bill 231 for hard-to-fill position stipends, where the final payroll allocations from June 2025 are recorded partially and improperly in July of 2025, which is the next fiscal year. So when that posting should have instead been booked to June of 2025. Again, that issue has already been corrected, and as I've noted, we've implemented controls and will continue to also expand upon those controls as we work toward our fiscal year-end close procedures. We did not have any NRS violations in this year's audit, though the district did note corrections that we made prior to submission for being in compliance for those. Those are all in Note 11, as Mr. Schlicker mentioned earlier. Again, both items have been addressed, and processes have been updated to accommodate for that and to, as best we can, continue to future-proof our work. We'll now turn it over to the board and Audit Advisory Committee for questions.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain any questions from the Audit Advisory members. Hearing no questions, we'll turn it back over to the board prior to the Audit Committee vote.
Thank you, Mr. Thornberry. Any questions from the trustees? Seeing none, Mr. Thornberry?
I'll in.
No, there was no public comment. I had already asked for it and closed it. See, John, I'm remembering. So, Mr. Thornberry.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 4.04.
Anna Binder, for the record, I would like to make a motion to approve the independent auditor's narrative report of recommendations and district responses to recommendations for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2025, and independent auditor's statements on Nevada revised statutes compliance.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Member Hammer, second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes the Audit Advisory Committee unanimously.
Thank you. Now it's our turn, trustees. I would entertain a motion on item 4.04. Trustee Barron.
I'll keep it short. I'd like to make a motion to approve 4.04.
Thank you, trustee Barron. Trustee Cabasos.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes six to zero. Thank you. And does that conclude, Mr. Thornberry? Are we, are you still 4.05 as well?
We're still 4.05.
Okay. Then we're going to go on to 4.05, 2425 recap of budget appropriation transfers. Is there anyone who did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? Seeing none, then I'll close that and turn it over to you, Mr. Thornberry.
Thank you, Madam President, for item 4.05. Any questions or comments from the Advisory Committee? Turning it back over to you, Madam President.
Mr. Thornberry, do you need to take a motion to approve, because it's an action item, or legal counsel, it's 4.05?
Yeah. We were going to after the board's questions.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Do any trustees have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Thornberry.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve item 4.05 from the Audit Advisory Committee.
Anna Binder, for the record, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 4.05, the 2020, 2024, 2025 recap of budget appropriation transfers.
Jeffrey Sher, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, Madam President.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion. Trustee Biassadi.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Agenda Item 4.05.
Thank you. Trustee Henry.
I would like to second.
I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes six to zero. Now we're on 4.06. Was there public comment on items not listed as action items on the agenda for the Audit Committee? Is there anyone that did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? Seeing none, I'll close that and turn it over to Mr. Thornberry for 4.07.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn for the Audit Advisory Committee.
Member Hammer, motion to approve.
Jeffrey Sher, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion to adjourn, approved.
Okay. And legal counsel, do I have to close it out as well?
No.
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 Okay. So then, the time is 6:41. Ms. Hammer, you were not here when we expressed our gratitude to all the members. Just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the trustees. So let us give our Audit Advisory Committee a round of applause for their service. We are now going to go on to 5.01, 2025 resolution of intent to issue general obligation bonds. Mr. DeHaaf, are you still in here? No.
Yeah, for the hills.
Oh. All right. Was there anyone who did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card for this item? Okay, seeing none. Mr. DeHaaf, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, members. Justin DeHaaf, Madam President, Justin DeHaaf, Chief Financial Officer, for the record. Item 5.01 is our notice of intent to issue our upcoming bond resolution for the spring of 2026. This is in accordance with the plan that was already approved in June, so there is nothing new with this. This is in alignment with what the board has already approved. But because of the timing and nature of the process to issue bonds and to do so, we are providing this notice of intent now. So there are no changes from what is already approved with the $200 million. We also anticipate seeking another bond refunding this spring, which we again hope to capitalize on with potentially improved interest rates to get some refunding as well. And that is the extent of the item.
Thank you, Mr. DeHaaf. Any questions from the trustees? Trustee Stevens.
Just to clarify real quick, when you say that, are you talking about like a refinance of the bond?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Yes.
Awesome.
Thank you, trustee.
Thank you. Trustee Barron.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. No, I'm just gonna tell you and your team, thank you very much. This is what responsible guardians look like, when you are able to go back and make things just a little bit more affordable for your constituents. So great job for you and your team. And by the way, if, if this goes the way you want it, you know, or may I, actually, I'm not going to ask you for, you know, what we're looking for, but we're going to have like a little celebration once, once we get through here, right?
Trustee, Justin DeHaaf, for the record, I certainly hope so, sir.
Yeah, thank you so very much. It's actually a pretty big deal. And again, if I ever call you Jordy again, please take it as a term of endearment.
Term of endearment, that's it. Trustee Asparza Stoffigan.
So no, I don't have any questions. I just want to really reiterate that, Mr. DeHaaf, you just make it so digestible for all of us. And I think the public is just really appreciating this level of transparency, clarity, and timeliness of all of the things that we need to be talking about. So, Madam President, if there's no further discussion, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Thank you. Trustee Dominguez, do you have questions?
Yes, just one to clarify.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. If you could just explain, just for the public, what the difference was between the 200, and I'm sorry, the 320 million versus the 200 million?
Thank you for the question, trustee. So 200 million is what we anticipate with the new bond issuance. 120 million is a tentative early projection on the refinancing, the refunding of the bonds.
Perfect.
And that would comprise the full 320 million, trustee.
Thank you.
Trustee Cabasos.
I was just gonna make a motion, to second the motion by, made by trustee Asparza Stoffigan.
Okay. Trustee Asparza Stoffigan, I will entertain a motion.
And before I make the motion, I do want to do a shout out to our bond oversight team, advisory group, and also our relationship with commissioners. And we do, do our due diligence about including all people, because it takes all of us. So I just wanted to do that before I made the motion. That's okay, Madam President? Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to accept 5.01, 2025 resolution of intent to issue the general obligation building bonds additionally secured by the pledged revenues as presented.
Thank you. Trustee Cabasos.
I'll second it.
I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes six to zero. We'll now move on to 5.02. This one's not an action item, just a presentation, 2026, 2027 school start times and transportation scenarios. Dr. Welsh.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert. Again, for the record, Dr. Jesse Welsh, Deputy Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. I am joined by our fabulous Assistant Superintendent of Transportation, Amber Rideout. And tonight, for presentation and discussion, we're going to share some information regarding our feedback from our stakeholder survey and a potential shift in start times for our schools for the 26, 27 school year, as well as information pertaining to potential scenarios for alternative transportation options. So I'd like to start with a little bit of context and the why, because I think the why is very important. So, one, we know that the body of research is well documented in terms of support for later start times, particularly for adolescent students. Later start times benefit students by increasing sleep duration and alertness in class, reducing absenteeism and tardies, and improving academic outcomes. Similarly, in 2023, Nevada Department of Education conducted a statewide survey and considered shifting school start times with high schools starting no later than 8:00 a.m. So while this is not an action item tonight, the scenarios included in our survey to, the scenario, excuse me, included in our survey to stakeholders, proposed a 30-minute shift later from our current start times for all schools district-wide. So, for example, a high school that currently starts at 7:15 a.m. would shift to 7:45 a.m. Or if you had a middle school that was starting at 8:05 a.m., it would shift to 8:35 a.m., and so on. And our rationale for that was really to look at some potential options to be able to make a change that was, in general, cost neutral, to be able to do something to help our students there. It's also important to note that CCSD does not have uniform start times for all schools by level. So again, while generally our high schools start somewhere around 7:00, our middle schools generally somewhere around 8:00, and our elementary schools somewhere around 9:00, those are not uniform times for every school. They vary So we understand that any adjustment to school start or end times impacts families' daily routines, support from our community partners, our athletics, our activities, before and after-school care, and many other factors. So in alignment with this work, we engaged with our teaching and learning team to identify potential factors and reached out to appropriate stakeholders to determine potential impacts and identify how they could be mitigated or addressed with any change. Some of the things that came up were concerns over conflicts with work schedules of parents and guardians, and that was something that was common across many grade levels. We also identified some challenges related to having enough time after school for homework, activities, and athletics. We also understand, of course, that extracurricular activities and athletics play an essential role in the student's school experience, and that adjustments to start or end times would potentially affect practices, game times, and transportation. We also know that changes to school start times would have an impact for school childcare programs, including things like Safe Key, Boys and Girls Club, After School All-Stars, et cetera. And we sent the survey to all of our community partners to gather feedback, recognizing the critical role that our partnerships and our, with our municipalities play in any potential shift in start times. So a brief overview on the survey to gather feedback So a brief overview on the survey, to gather feedback, we distributed a brief survey that outlined that proposal of that 30-minute shift. Potential benefits, we shared some of that research. Potential limitations, and then asked for peoples whether they supported or did not that 30-minute shift in start time. We opened the survey up on Friday, September 26th, and it was open through Friday, October 17th. We had the survey located on our district website, on the newsroom, all of our social media platforms, so that we could reach the maximum number of participants. Interviews were conducted with news stations. We had a toolkit developed for schools to be able to use to send to parents and students, as well as to post on their websites and social media. And then, as I shared earlier, working through our community government relations, we reached out to nearly 400 individuals and community entities to complete the survey and share feedback. And I'm very pleased to share that we had over 48,000 responses to the survey, getting very solid feedback from stakeholders across multiple groups. We also offered the survey in English and our top five most spoken languages in the district, as you can see on the slide, the number of responses for each language. In addition to the communication methods previously stated, we also included the survey link in our district newsletter, as well as, and specifically with that, it resulted in immediate submission of about 11,000 survey responses very quickly. And then we continued to have momentum throughout the campaign window with about 3,000 submissions daily on average. We also shared the survey through Spanish media and sent it in Spanish as well. So in terms of the survey participation, you can see here on the slide, by respondent group, individuals were able to select one or more roles that they identified with, with their affiliation with the district. So for example, if you were a staff member that also had students in the district, you might select staff as well as parent guardians. And then, of course, we did also look at our data to make sure that we were filtering out if there were any issues where, for example, if somebody said they were a student and a parent, they couldn't obviously be both. Of the survey responses received, there was significant participation across all grade level groups, with the plurality of responses being affiliated with pre-K and elementary at 38%. And again, as with affiliation, respondents could select one or more grade levels to account for multiple siblings. So if you had children at multiple grade levels, you could select multiple grade levels on the survey. So digging into some of the data, the first set of questions asked respondents to identify their agreement with the potential benefits in shift in start times. Respondents could select if they strongly agree, agree, disagree, or strongly agree with each item. The potential benefits that demonstrated the highest level of responses with agree or strongly agree were additional sleep with 61.22% positive responses, and improved mental health with 59.88% positive responses. All of the potential benefits received a majority of responses that were positive. As you can see from the graphs of the data for all respondents, for additional sleep and improved mental health, the distribution of responses on these questions were clustered in two groups, with strongly agreeing and strongly disagreeing representing the highest proportion of totals for each question. As a math educator, we would call this a bimodal distribution. Had to say it. This pattern of responses held true for all questions pertaining to potential benefits. Drilling down further into the top responses, we specifically wanted to look at our student voice, to hear what our students were saying. And when we looked at that, we saw there was strong support across all groups, elementary, middle, and high, to suggest that additional sleep and improved mental health would be beneficial, with the highest proportions of students strongly agreeing or agreeing at the middle school level, interestingly enough. And then we looked at a second set of questions that asked respondents to identify their agreement with potential limitations with a shift in start times. As with before, respondents could select if they strongly agree, agree, disagree, or strongly agree with each item. The potential limitations that demonstrated the highest level of responses were conflicts with parent guardian schedules with 49.82% positive responses, and time for after-school activities with 45.02% positive responses. All of the potential limitations received a minority of responses that were positive, suggesting that the limitations may be outweighed by the earlier benefits. As you can see from the graphs of the data for those two areas that were highest, the conflicts with parent guardian schedules and time for after-school activities, the distribution of responses on these questions clustered in two groups, with strongly agreeing and strongly disagreeing representing the highest proportion of totals for each question. And again, this pattern of responses held true for all questions pertaining to those potential limitations. Drilling down deeper, again, looking at our student voice, we see that elementary students were most concerned with time for after-school activities and homework. Middle school students expressed time for homework, athletics, and activities as potential challenges. And about a third of high school students expressed time for work, athletics, and activities as the top potential challenges. Then we asked respondents regarding their support for that proposed 30-minute shift in later start times. And again, the data both overall and across respondent groups clustered at the strongly agree and strongly disagree levels. We saw that participation, participants associated with high school had the greatest level of support for shifting start times, with 61.52% strongly agreeing or agreeing. Overall, support decreased slightly as we went down to middle school at 56.29, and then even more so with elementary school, as they supported the proposal the least with Finally, we dug into student voice on their responses regarding the shift in start time. And student support for a shift in start times was high across all three groups, with middle school having the strongest level of support at 75.09%, followed by high school with 68.43%. And then 65.37% of students at the elementary level supported the shift in start times. So having shared the feedback from the survey, I'll turn the presentation over to Amber Rideout, our Assistant Superintendent of Transportation, who will walk us through our current bell time schedule and some additional transportation options as well.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert, Amber Rideout for the record. A few years ago, in the 22-23 school year, the district adopted a standardized bell schedule. The bell schedule applies to all comprehensive school sites. The standardized bell schedule decreased the driver vacancy rate by reducing the number of bus routes needed. Based on the 25-26 bell schedule and the student transportation guidelines, the district has allocated 1,501 bus routes currently serving eligible CCSD students. This route count includes extra board, student travel for field trips and events, and are outlining drivers. In addition to the school start time survey, with consideration of shifting all school start times by 30 minutes, additional bell schedule scenarios will be presented. The scenarios include shifting bell start times and dismissal times, inverting high school and middle school start and dismissal times, adjustments to the elementary school start and dismissal times, inverting high school and elementary school start and dismissal times. Let's review the scenarios. This scenario, this scenario involves uniformly shifting the current three-tier bell schedule by 30 minutes. This scenario is cost neutral. Transportation, budgetary, and staffing needs would not be impacted. This scenario involves shifting the current high school and middle school bell schedule by 30 minutes, inverting high school and middle school bell times, adjusting the elementary school bell time by 15 minutes, and remaining on tier three. This scenario has an incremental cost. For bus scenario B, the incremental cost requires 51 additional buses and bus drivers, a one-time cost to increase the bus fleet, an annual cost for staff and vehicle maintenance. Scenario C, this scenario involves shifting the current high school and middle school bell schedule by 30 minutes, inverting high school and middle school bell times, identifying elementary schools based on location to invert the second-tier bell time, adjusting the elementary school bell time by 15 minutes and remaining on tier three. This scenario has an incremental cost. For bus scenario C, the incremental cost requires 56 additional buses and bus drivers, a one-time cost to increase the bus fleet, and annual cost for staffing and vehicle Next scenario. This scenario involves shifting the current high school and middle school bell schedule by 30 minutes, inverting high school and middle school bell start times, adjusting the elementary school bell time by 30 minutes and remaining on tier three. This scenario has an incremental cost. For bus scenario D, the incremental cost requires 42 additional buses and bus drivers, a one-time cost to increase the bus fleet, an annual cost for staffing and vehicle maintenance. For scenario E, this scenario involves maintaining the current bell schedule, inverting high school and elementary school bell times. Middle school remains on tier two, identifying elementary schools based on location to invert on the second tier of bell times. This scenario has an incremental cost. For bus scenario E, the incremental cost requires 52 additional buses and bus drivers, a one-time cost to increase the bus fleet, an annual cost for staffing and vehicle This slide is a combination of the scenarios we discussed, and it details the overview of the scenarios and the incremental cost. It includes the inversions in tiers of bell times, the one-time cost, the increase to the bus fleet, the annual cost for staff and benefits and vehicle maintenance. I thank you for your time. This concludes our presentation, and we're open for questions.
Thank you so much. Questions from the trustees? Trustee Satori.
Thank you very much for the presentation. One question, you were mentioning that the start times are not uniform, but then you had kind of said that they, that in 22-23, we had gone with that. Can you kind of clarify that a little bit? Because my question is, as far as the expectation for everyone following if we were to make this adjustment?
Thank you for your question, trustee. We typically have a couple of our magnet schools and some of our more specialized programs that might have a unique bell schedule. Many of them will maintain those schedules.
Okay, so that's not, schools can select that by any means. It is for a specific programming or purpose that they are on a different schedule.
That is correct.
Okay. And then my other question was, for our rural schools, what kind of accommodations are being, or considerations are being made for their circumstances or extratriual times and such? Or would they potentially have different circumstances or autonomy to keep theirs the same if desired?
We did not make a different scenario for the rural community. We do take those considerations for them now. So anything that may be unique to their community, we are already considering those things.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then finally, looking at the measures of like tardiness and attendance and some of those things, so we were looking at this for potentially next school year, correct? And then, kind of what metrics are we going to be looking at or resurveying or such to see if this was a positive change?
Yeah, thank you, trustee Satori. Yeah, to that, I think that's a smart way of looking at things. It's always great to start with the end in mind, so that we can know what we're measuring ahead of time. And I think, yeah, some of those things would be some low-hanging fruit in terms of metrics to look at, like, do we see a shift in academic performance, whether that's measured by grades or some of our standardized test scores, or some of our interims, attendance, tardiness? Like, I think those would be some pretty baseline things that we could look at to see if a shift in start times has a positive impact on students.
Thank you. Trustee Asparza Stroffigan.
So I really appreciate all of the options, and like, it's very interesting to see. The real question, I think, we've been receiving a lot of feedback from the community. So not just looking at the survey, but really people weighing in because they know now it's a conversation. So I guess my first question is, like, where is the funding coming from for this? If any of the other options were to be selected, and I'll have a follow-up.
Trustee Asparza Stroffigan to that question. So I think, in terms of the funding piece, obviously, if we pick any of those options that are not cost neutral, that would either have to come through funding through the general fund, or we would have to solicit funds from another source if we were able to get something, let's say, from the state in addition, you know, in terms of funding.
And then, thank you for that response. I think that was one thing that people were really wanting to find out. And there's definitely a differential between the different options. My next question is for Ms. Rideout. Thank you so much. I know, I think I asked this before, you've had the lowest vacancy rates for bus drivers. What is that? And then my follow-up, part two to that, is looking at the options to have 45, or 42, or 52 additional drivers, what is our rate of hire? Like, is that attainable?
Thank you for the question, trustee. I'm filled with emotion when I think about our driver vacancy. I've been with the department a really long time. And I remember when we had the 250-driver vacancy. I am humbled to share with the board that we are in single digits for our vacancy.
And you received the applause, because you deserve it.
Thank you for that. It takes a team. The transportation team works very diligently, including weekends, to onboard and recruit. We have a great partnership with HR, so we're very fortunate for the staff that are committed to onboarding and recruitment. We're very fortunate.
And I know, I don't, I want to allow time for my colleagues, but I really want to reiterate for anyone listening, the first person that the students see is their, if they're riding the bus, is the bus driver. So it really matters how they open their day. My part two question was about hiring rate. So do you mind responding to that one?
Sure. So we typically may deal with some fluidity when it comes to our onboarding and our hiring rate. We keep employees that are, or excuse me, applicants that are interested in our pipeline. And we like to have folks ready to go. So we are typically, right now, hiring monthly. We have our driver recruitment classes and our behind-the-wheel training. We do that onsite at the transportation facility. Our employees are CDL certified, so we're able to create a schedule that works for us and partner with the DMV while we're doing that.
So you answered the question. It seems like if an option were to be considered because of adding hires, that we would have a plan in place to transition to be sure that we'd have enough for next year, if this were something to be considered?
Yes, we are eager to feel that number.
Trustee Barron.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President. I didn't realize until just now that the president was off the dais there. Shows how, you know, I don't know if I'm totally awake right now. And here's what I'm getting at with this. Probably of everybody on the board, I probably have the most recent teaching experience in high school. And it wasn't that long ago, I remember I used to just wish for first-hour prep, because I knew that, you know, when I came in, I wasn't fully 100%, you know, awake, you know. There are different levels of consciousness, right? And looking at my students, right, half of them were like, not, not fully awake, you know, again. But I guess where I'm going with this is, before we start talking about making serious changes, you know, to many of these families, a majority of the families here of this district, before we start talking about doing these shifts, I'm wondering if we did any research, if we actually had any quantitative research to discover why it is that our students, you know, were not having quality of life, why they're having mental health issues, why isn't they staying up until 1:00? And the reason why I say this is because I know that I was carrying two jobs, and I was, I was actually up at 1:00 in the morning or later grading, and I would actually get messages, "Mr. Barron, what are you still doing up?" I get that on the incident thing here on Canvas, to, I would reply, "What am I doing up? What are you doing up?", right? I'm saying, you know, this might be something we really need to address. But before we start addressing this, you know, have we considered, you know, why is it the students are staying up way too late? And I have a feeling that even if we could roll this to where high schoolers start at 9:00. But I get this sneaky suspicion that students may not still be going to sleep at a proper time even to be at school at 9:00 in the morning. So I'm wondering, did we do any empirical research to find out why is it that students are not having enough sleep to begin with? And maybe we could address that first, you know, or we could actually discuss that first before we start putting the answer before the question?
Trustee Barone, glad to answer that question. I think it's a combination of factors, and obviously, it's not, you know, any one thing. Certainly, there are things such as, as you mentioned, students working jobs. We see that a lot, particularly at the high school level, where students might be working a job which keeps them up late, and then, you know, they might be getting home and then having to work on homework if they didn't get done before they went to work. And so that's certainly a factor. We also know this based on our, you know, knowledge of, you know, adolescence and childhood development that oftentimes, when students are in those teenage years, their body clock shifts. You know, it's just more natural for them to want to get up later and to stay up later because that's just how their bodies work at that particular age. And so I'd say it's probably a number of things. You know, you think about activities and sports. You know, if you have kids that are practicing after school or they've got a football game, you know, they might be up till at least 9:00, 10:00 o'clock, just even for the game before they even get home, start getting unwound, all those kind of things. So I'm sure it's a number of different factors, you know, as well as, I'm sure, some of the other less positive things like kids staying up, playing on their phones, watching TV, all those kind of things. So it's a number of reasons why kids stay up late.
Thank you, trustee Barone. Trustee Beasari.
Thank you. I know studies show additional sleep is tied into health improvement overall, period. I know this is just a discussion, but to weigh in, I don't believe the solution is to invert to have any student in class at 7:00 AM. So I'm in favor of a fiscally reasonable option. The number of responses obviously reflect the importance of this issue. I know there will be challenges, but I believe the health of our kids is worth working through those challenges. So thank you for the survey and for taking families into account.
Thank you, trustee Beasari. Trustee Cavazos.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Kind of piggybacking on one of the questions that trustee Satori had asked, and I happened to be at one of those elementary schools the other day that is not on the standardized, shall we say, schedule. How many schools we have across all three levels that are not on a standardized where it's like 7:00, 8:00, 9:00?
I'm going to phone a friend, trustee Cavazos, who's in the lobby. Thank you, sir. So, writing and scheduling administrator.
Always a good option.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Superintendent Ebert, Michael DeBerris, Transportation for the record. The schools that are currently on a non-standard bell time, meaning the 7:00, 8:00, 9:00, we have 28 that are at the elementary school level, 13 at the middle school, and 12 at the high school level.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. So with those schools, let's say that we went with the neutral cost. That would still, basically, we would still just adhere to 30-minute pushout? They wouldn't be on the same exact bell schedule because they're already not on the same exact bell schedule?
Yeah, we would keep those on the bell schedule. They're out just with that 30-minute shift, correct?
With 30-minute pushout, okay, thank you. If we were to go with the neutral cost with no, and I'm getting messages right now saying we don't consider $1 million in more incremental costs, but that's just, you know, was, that's our wording that we were using, and so people are objecting to that. If we went with the neutral cost, and this would be for the following school year, for '26, '27, when would we have to start making the arrangements for that and start basically working on making that happen?
Yeah, thank you for that question. That's specifically part of why we wanted to time this survey and this presentation. We know that if we were looking to make changes for '26, '27, we'd probably want to have that in place by the time we start working on strategic budgets and really planning in earnest for the upcoming school year, you know, in January-ish or so, I would say. So that would give us ample time to make sure we've got everything ramped up. Again, more so, I think, working with our community partners and so forth to make sure that we are able to have some of those programs shift in place and all of the other considerations. We'd also, of course, want to make sure that we, you know, give families ample time because we know, obviously, that that's a shift for families. But our intent and hope with that would be that if we're able to give enough time that people are able to figure out how to adjust, much as we did when we had the last set of very significant changes to our bell schedules, probably about, I want to say it was about 12, 15 years ago, when we actually went to our standardized bell times, and we did have a lot of schools that were moving, but we were able to make those shifts across the system based on those changes because we had some lead time.
Thank you, Dr. Welsh. And I have several questions, but I'll only ask one more because I see there's a lot of people in the queue. So educators were asking me, they are specifically faculty advisors, you know, for clubs and extracurricular activities, and they have their schedules wrapped around what they have now. And several of them have stated that they have had to go to a lot of trouble to do that. Do we anticipate, or is it too early possibly to be able to see? Would we still, would we lose faculty advisors for some of those school chapters of various clubs? And I'm not just talking about athletics. People always assume I'm talking about athletics. But I'm talking about clubs also, that we do require a faculty member, somebody to be there with them.
Yeah, trustee Cavazos to that question. Yeah, I think it'd be difficult to know. I mean, again, I think you have to take into account people's personal lives and things that they may have going on. For some people, even just a half-hour shift might make things more challenging for them. For other people, it might open up opportunities. So I think we would have to see how some of that plays out. And again, if we did do something where it was like that whole wholesale shift of 30 minutes, you know, it'd be across the system. So it would be a little bit, I think, easier to stomach maybe for some folks as well.
Thank you so much, and I'll reserve my other questions until it's my turn again. Thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Cavazos. Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam Clark. I had, so I will bring up athletics because that was a topic of my mind is, you know, high schoolers, middle schoolers, even elementary, as they have whatever league or whatever things that they do. Have we considered, have we discussed with athletics? What are those conversations looking like?
Yeah, thank you, trustee Dominguez. Yes, we have had those conversations with our activities and athletics department. Some of the, while we don't anticipate significant challenges, some of the challenges we might face are particularly with some of our sports that are played on non-lighted fields. If we shifted a little bit later in the day, and particularly when you think about this time of year, that could make game times a little more challenging. There might be some instances where we have to start a little bit earlier relative to our bell schedule, which in some cases could mean that we'd have to pull kids, like we do at some schools already, at the end of the day during their last period of the day. That would be one potential impact. Again, in our conversations with activities and athletics, we felt like that would be fairly limited, but wanted to acknowledge that that could be a limitation.
Thank you for that. And...
Sorry, I would like to add to that response. Thank you. There's a mindset that everything shifts, and so athletics would shift. But we know that school districts across this nation have, you know, when we have about, it's just about 20% of our kids participate in athletics. So we're talking about the other 80%. But if we shift the high school to a later start time, they do practices in the morning. So we, and for us here in Las Vegas, the heated time of the day, if we're able to shift the later time for start for everybody, they could have practice in the morning.
That is a good idea. Thank you. So my last question was concerning the after-school providers. You know, since it'd be predominantly, well, it'd be shift for both, right? So before and after school. Have we discussed with the municipalities? Have we looked at the numbers of how many students that would impact, especially for elementary school?
Yes, so we have reached out to our municipalities and particularly asking that question, like, when we think about our safe key programs. The initial information we've received, in particular, City of Henderson, has indicated, actually, they didn't really have a specific cost estimate. City of Las Vegas indicated that they anticipate no change in cost or possibly a very small change in cost, particularly with the morning time period. Again, they'd have to kind of look at that. But we have reached out to all the municipalities with that. And up to this point, they're uncertain whether there would really be a significant shift because, again, many students are in safe key both in the mornings and then the afternoons. And in that case, it would be essentially a wash.
Thank you. I do have one final question. I'm so sorry, I just got reminded of something. So the, I know you had mentioned, as we go into the next steps with, when you were mentioning with trustee Cavazos, where, when do you need a decision from us? And then how, what more phases do we need before we get to that?
Yeah, so any decision that we might make as a district would be one that we would make as a team. And, you know, that would be a management decision that we would have to make if we were going to make a change to start times. And again, in my mind, I would think that we would want to make that shift sooner rather than later. So, you know, again, I'm thinking, you know, very early here in the upcoming school year so that we have ample runway time to be able to, one, inform our families and then, two, be able to make those shifts that we would need to make with whatever change we might make.
Thank you.
Trustee Stevens.
So thank you. I know that this is a huge endeavor, not just putting all of this out there, but actually getting engagement from this many people. So kudos to you guys for doing this. I also want to give a shout-out to Foothill High School. I know our superintendent got the same emails I did, but they were assigned by one of their teachers, like, you, they, one of them even sent me the template. But like, you could see they had to reach out to us and tell us if they were in favor or why they didn't want it, and I just love that. So anyways, the engagement was great. And as I'm looking at this, and I don't want to take anything away from all of the positive on here that we're talking about in terms of, you know, extra sleep for the kids because I couldn't agree more on that aspect. However, when I do look at page 12 and I see additional expenses related to before-after-school childcare, so what families are saying, "This would impact me", we're talking about 44%. So that's almost, you're talking about almost half of our families are saying, "This is going to create an extra cost for us." I don't know if there is, we have great data here that, we have great data here, especially around transportation and those costs for the district. But I'm wondering if there's a way to find out from these families at what level does this impact them financially? I also know that when we talk about safe key, while it may, while some municipalities might say, "Well, you know, it shouldn't cost us too much more", I'm hearing from schools and from, from some of our educators and admin that their safe key programs are quite understaffed. So if more schools require safe key services, are they going to be able to fill those, fill those gaps? And are we going to have this, are they going to have the staff to help? So these are some of the things that come to my mind. And then, and specifically around the elementary school, just because it's such a later time. And I know, I can think of one school off the top of my head where staff actually shows up to school even earlier because kids are just getting dropped off in front of the school before safe key's even there. And so this could create additional challenges in that capacity. And then finally, I know I'm throwing a lot out there, and I'm sorry, but high schools. When I think about high schools and sports and stuff like that, I know some of our high schools still have the block schedule. And I don't know if that's a, if that's a good solution. But it's just something, these are the things that come to my mind when I'm looking through this data and I'm thinking, okay, yes, kids need more sleep. Yes, there's things that we can do. We can even, you know, change these schedules. But how are we measuring some of these impacts and what could we do?
So a few things on this. And yes, a huge gratitude to, you reminded me, because those emails were, you know, probably 10,000 emails ago. But the group of students from Foothill, they were very articulate, very passionate on what their vision was for school start time. So the response, especially on page 12, I just want to bring everybody back. The initial survey, and we did get a lot of, you know, "Well, how come you didn't give us 20 different options?" And the reason why, again, back to, is cost-neutral, right? That was the first thing. Could the community, could we shift without any additional costs? And you have these results. So the, just like the students, many other people have stepped up and also spoke with a group of elementary principals even just yesterday of really looking at elementary starting earlier to avoid. The survey results here are in relationship to elementary schools starting possibly, you know, 9:30. And so then that daycare, right, that care, because people have to be at work, that additional cost. So I would take the survey results and really keep it into, if elementary was to start at 9:30, that's where the mindset comes in with the additional costs. If they were starting at 7:30 or 7:45 or whatever those components are, the care in the early morning goes away-ish, right? Because now people are actually starting schooled. Their children are coming to, elementary school students are coming earlier, and it shifts to an afternoon, which those families that are participating already in afternoon would continue to participate. So it's been, again, huge gratitude to everyone that has provided insights. And we had a lot of people that have moved out of state and are saying, you know, "Well, where I came from, elementary, middle, and then high was the start time." And the research, too. I mean, why, why would we even call the question? Is because the research does show, from the American Pediatric Association, they just put out last week additional research on this and school districts that have started, that switched and had elementary start first. They said there was a slight uptick in absences at elementary. However, there is also an increase in math scores. And if we are about student achievement, not only for elementary, middle, and high school, right, the shift for the additional funds, for the additional buses. And again, huge shout-out to Amber, Mike, and Mike, Michael, our two Michaels, and Amber. They ran, you know, after we started to see the results, okay, you know, elementary school, not so much. High school, you know, they do want this later start time, and it would work for them. But the buses themselves can be purchased out of bond funds. And so, you know, that component we looked into. The team also looked into, okay, well, if we need 59 buses, can they deliver, you know, 59 buses? And correct me if I'm wrong, they said between seven and nine months for now. Today, on November 13th, they're saying seven to nine months. And then, too, most importantly, you know, we want to be able to communicate with our families in advance that these are the plans for the '26, '27 school year. And I will double down on the hiring. Within 90 days, you know, we had about a 50, 60 when schools started vacancies. Am I correct in that? Yeah. And so within, within 60 to 90 days, they drove it down to zero. And the HR team, as noted as well, has really done a great job. And their professional development for the drivers, getting them trained and getting them on the road has just been phenomenal. So those are other pieces that I would add the board for consideration as we're talking about this.
Thank you. Trustee Espers Ostroffigan.
So this discussion, we knew was going to be hearty and full. It has more questions have been raised. I have like three. So I'm afraid to even mention this, but let me not start with that one. Let me get, let me save it for the end. So what do we, since we are the destination district, you know, as I said, we are. What are our charter schools doing? And what is, is, I think, it's not a now question, but it's, can we research? What is their makeup? Because some of our charter schools have different grade configurations, maybe K through 12, K through 8. What are their, what are their times? I want to find out that information? Or did you want to respond?
No, we could certainly look at finding that information. Great question.
Okay. And then my second, well, I'm going to, now, let's, let's go to the thing I'm going to...
And then my second, well, I'm going to, now let's, let's go to the thing I'm going to bring up. I don't think many, I don't know that any of us were here when they changed the boundaries for students. I don't know, can you clarify, is it two miles that they get busing or can you clarify for me, what is that?
Thank you for the question, trustee. Yes, it is a two mile radius that the students are there, two mile exceeding and they are eligible for transportation unless we see hazards that are within the walk path, then we would provide transportation for those students.
So the reason that I'm bringing that up is because some of us were in the system and we saw drop in high school students coming to school because of the, the zone change for busing. And in addition, some of them were being given RTC passes and there was a lot of concern for their safety riding the public transportation. We never captured that data, I don't know if anybody did, it was pre all of, everyone that's probably here in this leadership, but it would have been something we should have been grabbing to say, why aren't our kids coming back to school? So here's the question, this is like the long way, right? So the question is siblings take care of their youngers. And thank you superintendent for saying, because that is something where people like the potential of flipping the schedule. So I'm looking at option E. Is there a way, if we were to look at a much larger eligibility zone, is there a way to kind of get that cost down? So that's not a now answer, but it's something I'm asking you to research again, since we're having this conversation. And I'm done.
Thank you. Trustee Barron.
I'm sorry, I just had to look to see who's calling on me. Thank you, Madam President. Snuck back in there. Measure twice, cut once. This is a huge decision. I, I have, I didn't know that the, at the tender age of, I won't say it because someone might kick me later on, but I, I had no idea that I was going to be raising children again at this age and gosh, I drop off a middle school kid over at White, at Thirven White and it's always nice to wave to the principal, he, who is so kind as to actually shepherd the children across the street with his sign there. He's an amazing guy out there, really, really respect him. And then get home and then sometimes I drop off the other grandkid at a different school there at nine o'clock. But I'm just looking at this, you know, these, these start times for the elementary children later and later. And we're going to wind up doing a, a, some sort of a daycare in, in the daytime and whether it's a district that picks the, the, the charge for that or the municipalities, right? I just, I still think that's an, a cost that isn't factored in here. Now, I was just thinking this though, you know, I mean, we're not in a hurry to do this. Our superintendent, you know, I, I believe wholeheartedly, we need a wholesale shift in the way that we do business. Getting leaner and meaner, like having K through eight schools, our, our brother teachers there in charter schools, you know, they've been on, they've been doing this kind of stuff. They, they, some of them have pre-K and all this, right? I like the idea of doing real transformation and there's other things that our superintendent has talked about that I, I'm really on board with, like maybe extending the school day, which is fantastic. So before we do this, you know, like monkey around with this, right? I like to take, you know, I would like just suggest to my colleagues that we take a step back and actually, instead of going with this, we take actually a better and deeper, more comprehensive approach. And, no, because I mean, it works, just follow along with me, it kind of works. If we're dropping off children at the school at nine o'clock, I mean, at seven o'clock in the morning, right? It works for us to extend, extend the day for them to the afternoon to where even like their older brother, their older siblings could pick them up, right? Think about this, it might work and we might actually get a formula that incorporates a longer school day with, you know, with changing the school times. So I, I would just submit that I, I think we need more information. I, I think we may, need more consideration. And, you know, we could look at this as, as one of my, one of my colleagues here pointed out, that option E, we could look here in a year from now, if we get the right formula here, extending a school day, which will have probably some costs as well. And then, you know, paying, having to pay for more transportation, they might see, if we actually have, you know, better results, that we have, you know, climate achievement, that could be a very cheap cost, you know, in retrospect, if we incorporate different things at the same time. So I, I would strongly urge my colleagues, you know, to maybe ask and consider for us to take a step back and incorporate different, different modes of educating these kids at the same time that we do the, these, these changes. I know it's a lot, but you know, I, I'm thinking just with the people that I know, some of them are kind of scared, you know, where there's a lot of working class families. They, their entire day shifts around who drops off the kids, who picks them up in the afternoon and, and you know, and even with our friends here, like with the Boys and Girls Club, this is going to dramatically shift, you know, because believe it or not, they're probably, after the municipalities, they're probably the biggest daycare in the valley, you know? They, they, they take care of 10 to thousands of kids. And I, until you're walking these people's feet and on these people's shoes, right? It's really hard to totally understand it. So I, I just think a more comprehensive approach to this might be in order. I guess, it's not really a question, but have we thought about doing, I guess the question is this, have we thought about doing a more comprehensive approach in conjunction with like extending a school day for like elementary kids?
Yeah, again, trustee Brown to this, no, we haven't looked specifically at incorporating additional elements. The real focus here was trying to look at option, and that's really where we just started with the survey was if we could do something to shift the day to help some of our students to be able to benefit from that later day and do it with a cost neutral, that's really where the survey came. And then obviously with the additional options to be able to share additional information, because we wanted to be more exhaustive in terms of looking at some other opportunities. But no, we did not look at this, extending the school day, I will share and I don't have the back of the napkin math, but it is a significant cost when you think about that because you're now paying all of your staff for longer hours as well. And so you can imagine what, you know, even just a small, you've been adding a couple minutes comes out to.
There might be a special sauce here somewhere between, we get the pre-K and extended school day and a shift this, I'm just saying, and then we're actually able to maybe even change school zones, you know, ourselves, you never know.
Thank you. Trustee Johnson.
Yeah, it's, it's been great to hear this. I guess the first, maybe I'll go on trustee Barron's line of questioning first and then I'll go to my other, other wondering. When we were thinking about the calendar for the year, we had, we had the pressure, the decision-making pressure of the next school year is coming, we had to make that choice. Do we have some force and function here that is creating this urgency? And if we don't, that's also fine, I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to understand our, our choice points.
No, I appreciate the question there. Yeah, again, I, I think we would want to make sure that we're giving families enough lead time, number one. Two, and particularly if we were looking at any options that involve, you know, the addition of additional buses, then, I mean, as you heard, there's a lead time on procuring those buses and getting them built out for our needs. So I mean, that would be where the clock would be ticking in terms of having a decision point.
And to be clear, I'm not trying to, I don't want to punt to the next year if we don't have to, but, but we, at least, at least I feel more comfortable knowing that we have the option to do something more creative if we decide that. The, the greater wonder that I have is when you shared your, which I really appreciate because that resonates with me, to be able to help make a, make a good decision. And the, the thought behind it was, one, we want to do something that's cost neutral if, if possible, but most importantly, I heard, we want to make sure we're making a choice for students. So in, in my mental calculation, my mental calculus is students first, cost second. And I know we don't have unlimited resources and so that, that is a factor, but the, the more important factor, in my opinion, would be student, student outcomes. And so if we, if, if our choice is between finances, sorry, Justin, and, and student outcomes, just you're going to win if you had to pit each other against. So I think we should try to think about what's the, what's the outcome that's going to have the greatest good for student academic outcomes and then we worry about finances when we worry about, and we can just, Justin, he's really smart, he'll figure out how to get us more money, but if we can get academic outcomes faster, which is everybody's main goal, we can figure out how to pay for it later, sorry, Justin. But in all seriousness though, like that is a thing that is, should be at the heart of the conversation and I recognize that if we, it, there is a cost to it all, but we consistently say, let's do what's best for students and we also say, we are racing to get the best academic outcomes. Well then that should like trump all of our decisions, like that should be the highest order. And like, and so if, like superintendent said, if we have students come a little bit earlier and it costs a little bit more money, like that's the narrative that we tell our families in the community, we're making this choice, yes, it's expensive and we're making this investment because we want to see academic outcomes turn around faster and you're asking for that. So we're doing what you're asking and it requires an investment. So nothing is without the investment, but if we, if we want to see those returns, we have to make a choice that allows for us to see that the fastest, because that's how we become the absolute destination district when we, year over year, have students with academic outcomes. So it's, so if that's the, if that's the decision-making thought, whatever choice will get us to the fastest academic outcomes within the most reasonable investment cost is the one we should choose, right? So that's, that's my opinion on that. Like best academic outcomes at a cost that is within reason, right? Like we can't spend $16 billion, but we can spend six, $1.6 million on, on, on capital and then make a long-term annual investment on student outcomes. Sorry for preaching, y'all.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Cavassos.
Thank you, Madam President. Most of my other questions, thank you, have been answered. And before I forget and just write out, I want to compliment you again. I can see how much the passion you had for the bus drivers and that's just, having been here the longest, I can remember when it was really quite high. So that's really amazing. So thank you so much to you and your team. I have a question from a high school student and they want to know that if we do go with the least invasive, the least, shall we say disruptive plan, which would be, you know, the no-cost alternative, where we just go forward with a 30-minute pushout. He wants to know, is there going to be, this is a high school senior, they're smarter than we are, they want to know, is there going to be any kind of a community or family resource hub to help our families who are struggling with the changes that they would need to make? He's most concerned because he lives with his grandmother, he has one younger sibling, he is an athlete and he takes care of the younger siblings. So he hit me with everything at once. So I guess the question is, is could we possibly have, I don't know if it's something we've thought about or to have some kind of a family resource hub where people could actually reach out more than just a survey and say, okay, so the decision has been made, this is how we're going to go forward, but we need help with this. So how would we do that?
Yeah, trustee Cavassos, I love that idea of connecting, particularly with our family engagement unit, to be able to aggregate some of those resources and information to help families if we were to make a selection and move forward with a shift. That's a great idea.
Do you know, I'm sorry, Dr. Welsh, a follow-up. Do we know if any of the other school districts that have done this and as our superintendent was saying, have had positive results, do they have anything like that? And were these positive results all kind of centered around the 30-minute timeframe? Not 45 minutes or an hour, but 30 minutes?
Yeah, you know, I can speak to, I know there's some other neighboring states that recently had a shift in start times, it was actually legislatively mandated in some of those states and they have seen positive academic results for their students. I don't believe it was necessarily a 30-minute shift and again, I, because of the legislation, it was that certain grade levels could only start, I believe it was high school couldn't start before, you know, 8:30, I think it was, and middle school no earlier than eight, if I'm, if I'm remembering it correctly. But many other districts, you know, again, we're a bit of an anomaly here in Nevada where we only have, you know, a small number of districts relative to, you know, most other states that have multiple districts. In most of those other states, you know, there's a lot more autonomy, I think, in terms of how they chose to meet those legal requirements. So I don't know if there were, I'm sure there might have been some cases where people just shifted, but I can't speak to that specifically in terms of how others may have adapted to change when those changes occurred.
Okay. I, I would like to see some more research on that if possible, you know, comparatively, because I know that we do comparative analyses with other similar districts in other categories. We're talking about absenteeism, we're talking about achievement rates. So we could, if we could get some of that other research, because besides the research articles that were cited here, I did a little bit more of my own cyber stalking and saw that there were a few little differences here and there, but there's a wide diversity because some of them were rural districts, some of them were districts that were much smaller than ours and didn't, I ran out of time. So just want to throw that out there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Biassadi.
Thank you, Madam President. And just to echo the, what my colleague trustee Johnson was saying, performance should be at the heart of this decision. And I do think we've done the effort to bring the community to the table on this discussion. So shelving this discussion wouldn't, I think, be appropriate now. So I do urge our board to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Close out with trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. So I have, so thank you for bringing up the, the example about this, another state mandating those changes. I think, you know, before somebody in Carson City gets an idea, I think we, it's best that we keep it at this level and we decide and we make the decision as a community and we make, we have the autonomy to change things as we go. So I thought that, I just wanted to include that. But my question was about breakfast. What time, does breakfast usually start 30 minutes before? How does, how does it work?
I'll do my best on that one. I mean, typically, you know, breakfast service, yeah, it's right before school starts. I know, I feel like I should be phoning a friend if I had a friend in the room to answer that question. Oh, you, I have lots, oh, you got it? Thank you.
I want to be the friend.
Amber's got it, all right.
So, so typically, transportation, I can at least speak for that regard. Schools have 15 to 20 minutes before the bell time to allow students to consume their meals. So we also route for that expectation to allow those students to get there and have their breakfast.
Perfect, okay. So if we, you know, like just as an example, examples, options B and C, elementary school would start at 9:15. So, you know, if the school was originally at nine o'clock, parents could still drop them off at nine o'clock for breakfast or, you know, even a little bit early maybe. So, okay, so I just, I wanted to just clarify how much earlier breakfast was, so thank you.
Awesome, thank you. That concludes our presentation. Thank you so much, Dr. Welsh. We will now move on to item 5.03, which is an action item. Before I open that item, is there anyone who did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? Mr. Caruso, can we remove the nameplates of the audit committee? And then Ms. Caitlin, can I have the speaker card signups? Okay, no, seeing no others that are interested in this topic for public comment, I'll close that out. And Mr. Mansel, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, members of the board, superintendent Ebert, for the record, Dustin Mansel, chief academic officer. I am joined by Elena Kriner-Wilson, our assistant superintendent of the curriculum and instruction division. Tonight, we are here to present two actions for consideration. The first notice of intent is to adopt Clark County School District Regulation 6122.2, Curriculum Resources. The second notice of intent is to repeal Clark County School District Regulation 6124.1, Curriculum Guides, which was originally adopted by the Board of School Trustees in 1969 and later amended in 1981 and 1992. It is proposed tonight that the content in Regulation 6124.1, Curriculum Guides, be updated as Regulation 6122.2, Curriculum Resources, to ensure alignment with the related instructional plans regulations, which are 6122 and 6122.1. So an adoption of the new with updated language and a repeal of the old with the outdated language. Before we begin, we would like to take a quick moment to thank our principal working group and the district's executive leadership team for their collaboration and support in developing these recommendations. So Madam President, with your permission, I will hand over the first presentation to Mrs. Kriner-Wilson, who will review the proposed adoption of Regulation 6122.2, Curriculum Resources.
Madam President, members of the board, superintendent Ebert, for the record, Elena Kriner-Wilson. The ref- The reference material for item 5.03, Notice of Intent, Clark County School District Regulation 6122.2, Curricular Resources, outlines the proposed language for this regulation. The regulation number 6122.2 is proposed to align with related district regulations on instructional planning. Regulation 6122, Instructional Plans, and Regulation 6122.1, Instructional Plans, Specially Designed Instruction. The proposed title, Curricular Resources, reflects the supporting materials that assist licensed educators during the instructional planning process for all students. Section 1 clarifies that all district-provided resources must align with state standards and course goals established by the State Board of Education. It includes examples of common district-provided resources and emphasizes that licensed educators use these resources when planning instruction for all students. Section 2 specifies that curricular resources may be adjusted or modified to meet the needs of students with individualized education programs, IEPs. It also reaffirms that instructional planning for students receiving special education services must align with Regulation 6122.1, Instructional Plans, Specially Designed Instruction. Thank you for the opportunity to share the proposed Regulation 6122.2, Curricular Resources. At this time, we welcome any questions from the board.
Thank you so much. Trustees, any questions? Trusty Barron.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, I think I actually kind of already asked this question, but it's nice for everyone else to hear it. I remember, as, I'm really happy, I guess, so now officially Curriculum Engine is dead.
Trusty Barron, thank you for the question. It has reached its end of life, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, you know, although at the time, it was very good for pacing, but the new, definitely, it's child, is much better for, you know, for helping out, especially teachers who, they might be shifting between, you know, assignments, or new teachers to the profession, where you have a lot more resources that are embedded in there. And maybe you could just speak a little bit to that. And again, just, I remember, it's difficult, you know, there's very few teachers who step in from the very first day, and they're super teachers. Most of us had to learn the profession through trial and error, a lot of error usually. But this seems like it's going to be as so much better as a tool, not just for students, you know, improve student outcomes, but for teachers to keep them in the profession over the most critical time, which is the first one to three years of your employment. Did you speak to that, maybe?
Yes, thank you, Trusty Barron, for the question. So in January of 2025, we launched the Curriculum Hub, which is the one-stop shop for all curricular resources and professional learning for our teachers. So it really is an online tool through Canvas that provides them courses at the grade level, at the content area level, and it gives them all of their instructional resources and materials that they would need for planning. So, for example, instead of, I'm going to have my TE over here, and then over here, I'm going to get my supplemental resources, oh, I'm going to get my pacing guide from over here, it's all digitized in one place for the teachers to be able to locate everything that they need, from standards, vertical alignment, teacher clarity guides, pacing guides, teacher decision-making points, any guidance documents, and the materials to be able to plan effectively for the students in front of them to meet their needs.
I'm so happy. You know, it's, again, for anybody here who's a teacher, you know exactly what I was talking about. There's days you go home in your very first, in your first year or two, it's tough, you know, it's tough. And this is just, it's just a fantastic consideration, and I'm, I cannot endorse this any more than I possibly could. Whoever came up with this, right, I just want to give you a great big hug, you know, it's, it's a nice evolution into the teaching profession, making things a lot easier. And for the record, it's not canned teaching. This is things that you can actually go and you can pick and choose materials that, you know, align with their standards, they're approved content, and of course, you can add more stuff to it, right? But this gives our teachers a nice new base from which to flower a whole new tree of knowledge, correct?
Trusty Barron, that's correct. They're really guidance documents to help the teachers understand, for example, if they're looking at the pacing guide, the progression of their standards, and then looking at the Tier 1 instructional materials, as an example, where is the standard taught in the materials? How much time should I spend on the standard? And then, of course, they're bringing the needs of their students to their mind, and they're thinking about if they have to make any adjustments based on the needs of their students. So it's not canned, it's really guidance documents to be able to support them and walk them through the materials so that they maximize on their time while they're planning.
I will shed a tear of happiness and satisfaction.
Amen. Trusty Biassadi.
Thank you, Madam President. I know during the briefing, I asked if the curricular resources could be listed on our district website for parents and the community to view. And although they're not accessible for public view, I just want to, if parents are listening, they can request to view the curriculum through the Curriculum and Instruction Division. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trusty Asparza Strofigan.
Well, I found the hub. I just didn't have time to go into the hub. My question is, is did we create that, or was it a platform that we purchased? And then I have a part B.
Thank you for the question, Trusty Asparza Strofigan. We use Canvas as the course to be able to develop the Curriculum Hub.
Okay. And then I guess my follow-up would be, a lot of teachers are using AI features and tools and resources. What are we doing to support that level of their ability to tap in and maybe integrate it into the hub?
Thank you for the question. Currently, in the hub, there is a Canvas course that goes through all of the AI tools and features that we have. It's kind of a self-paced professional learning on demand for teachers to be able to access and utilize and learn more about the AI tools. There's also in-person professional learning that's offered each, almost each month to teachers to be able to learn how to integrate those features and to be more efficient with their time.
Thank you. That ends our questions. Then I will entertain a motion for item 5.03. Trusty Barron.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Trusty Henry.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes six to zero. Next, we're going to open up item 5.04, Notice of Intent, on the Clark County School District Regulation 6124.1. And before that, do we have anyone that did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? Seeing none, I will close that and ask Dr. Mansell to begin.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert, Dustin Mansell, and again, joined by Elena Kriner-Wilson. The reference material for item 5.04, Notice of Intent, Clark County School District Regulation 6124.1, outlines the proposed repeal of this regulation. This would be that second action that we previously discussed. As shared by Mrs. Kriner-Wilson, the language in this regulation was updated and moved to Regulation 6122.2, Curricular Resources, which the board just approved, the notice of intent to adopt. Here, you can see the repeal of this old, outdated regulation. And so we will pause at this time and take any questions from the board.
Thank you. Any questions from the trustees? Trusty Cavazos.
Now, I was ready to make a motion, if there were no questions.
Okay. All right. Trusty Dominguez, a question from you?
I'll second after I clarify this question.
Okay. Trusty Cavazos, please make the motion.
I wanted to clarify something.
Oh, you have a question? Sorry.
So, I know we had spoken about this in our meeting, and I just wanted you to clarify for the public that, about IEPs, and if there were any changes to that.
Thank you for the question. Trusty Dustin Mansell, for the record, no. The repeal of this regulation does not impact individualized education programs or the services provided to our students receiving special education services.
Perfect. Thank you. And I'm ready for the second.
Trusty Cavazos.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve 5.04, Notice of Intent, Clark County School District Regulation 6124.1.
Thank you. Trusty Dominguez.
I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes six to zero. We will now go to 5.05, Special Session Legislative Update.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert, tonight, we are excited to give you an update on the special session that is occurring as we speak. And I believe that my colleague, Dr. Brad Keating, is on the phone, hopefully. He's working. Well, while we wait for that. So, we are specifically focused on two particular bills that we're going to talk to you about tonight, but I wanted to let you know that both Dr. Keating and Dr. Wa are up in Carson City representing us right now. There are several bills that Dr. Keating's going to go over with you. But the two that are most of note, one is a bill related to the film tax, which has been a hot topic, as everybody knows. And that bill is now focused on, the revenue from that bill is now focused on pre-K, I hear Dr. Keating, there he is, is now focused on pre-K funding, which Dr. Keating can fill you in on. And then there's another bill, there's, the first hearing for that was today, Dr. Keating will fill you in. And then there's another bill tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM that is specifically related to school traffic safety. And we all know, we've had many conversations about the increase in incidence of students 18 and younger, having incidents with cars between the hours of 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM on weekdays, on school days. And so it's been really heartening to see our community come together around a few shared initiatives to address this issue and make our school zones more safe, and potentially also look into a study that would examine even more that we could do to ensure that our students are safe. So, Dr. Keating, I think I hear you.
You do. Good evening, board. Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert, Brad Keating, for the record, coming to you live from rainy Carson City. As Kirsten had mentioned, so Governor Lombardo called a special session yesterday afternoon, and lawmakers officially raced up to Carson City to begin their work this morning. So the agenda for the special session includes a number of several, a number of major policy areas, such as public safety, including updates to assault, domestic violence, DUI, firearm relinquishment laws, healthcare access through a statewide recruitment and grant program to strengthen Nevada's provider workforce, school zone safety, which Ms. Seer had mentioned, cybersecurity, including the creation of a statewide security operations center, economic and workforce development, which we will discuss, about film studio infrastructure, as well as support for vulnerable communities such as Windsor Park, the relocation program that's happening, as well as some appropriations supporting SNAP modernization, emergency response capacity, behavioral health, and educational initiatives, specifically providing some funding for the Commission on Innovation and Excellence in Education to continue the work that they're doing every day. But in total, I wanted to let you know that the legislature is considering a total 14 bills, 16, or six assembly resolutions, and three Senate resolutions during this special session. So I wanted to bring your attention to two bills that the district is watching closely. Assembly Bill 5, which is the Nevada Studio Infrastructure Jobs and Workforce Training Act. It started, it was heard at 2:00 PM today, and the hearing ended at about 7:40 PM this evening, just a few minutes ago. We talked about this bill last legislative session. But essentially, the bill provides transferable tax credits to attract major film and television production studios to the state. The goal of that bill is to really build long-term film infrastructure, expand job opportunities, diversify Nevada's economy, and bring companies like Warner Brothers and Sony Studios, who have committed to opening its Summerland Studios if this bill were to pass. Part of the, of Assembly Bill 5 also provides the Clark County School District with a predictable and consistent funding source for pre-K programs, something that has never happened in the state of Nevada. So earlier this afternoon, Superintendent Ebert was asked to speak about how the district would use these dollars to expand our pre-K services, which she was able to do. So if this bill is passed, CCSD's vision is simple, to increase access to full-day pre-K for all three- and four-year-olds in our district, ensuring that every student is ready to learn upon entering kindergarten. So despite the clear benefits, and we all know them, and you all know them on the board, for pre-K, it's unfortunate that only 11% of Nevada's children aged 3 to 5 are served through state-funded pre-K programs. So these disadvantages under prepare our children in an increasingly competitive world compared to these states across the country that are providing universal access to pre-K. So our strategy, which Superintendent Ebert discussed, was really to utilize the funds from this bill, maximize the current revenue projections, which start with modest numbers, but build and impact every single year, build upon each year. As the studios take place and as shovel-ready projects begin, the dollars increase for CCSD in future years for pre-K. Wanted to let you know there was no action taken on this bill a few minutes ago. They closed out the committee. We'll keep the board informed if and when this bill progresses through the special session. The other bill I wanted to bring your attention to, which Ms. Seer mentioned, was Assembly Bill 6, which is tentatively scheduled to be heard tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. That is legislative time. So we will see what time it actually starts. But that is a piece of legislation regarding school zone safety. So the bill focuses on three key areas, and I'll go through those with you. Number one, we're focused on modernizing school zone design and operations. So what does that mean? We're going to give local governments the flexibility to design school zones, including adjusting the size and the layout to match real, on-the-ground safety needs. We know how, if a school zone needs to be extended or shortened, that local governments need that flexibility to make it safer for our kiddos. Allowing those local agencies to adjust the school zone flasher schedules without needing state approval. So that's hugely helpful for all of us in an early release day, an after-school event, or as we see right now in Las Vegas, as it gets darker earlier every single day. We'll also permit flashers to render in additional times when kids are present, might be a breakfast program or a late sports event, and it streamlines the approval process so safety adjustments can be made much more quickly than going to the state. Second piece that it focuses on is increasing penalties for unsafe driving in school zones. Doubles the base fines for speeding, illegal U-turns, distracted driving, double parking, parking in bike lanes, blocking crosswalks and sidewalks, or passing violations. It is, it also adds extra driver's license to merit points for these violations. It treats excessive speeding, 15 miles or more over the speed limit as a more serious offense, similar to other states like reckless driving in the school zone standards. The final thing this bill will do is it strengthens the DUI penalties in school zones. So it adds school zones and school crossings to the list of locations where DUI penalties are automatically enhanced. It also ensures enhanced DUI penalties work hand-in-hand with Rex's law, so that the highest possible penalty applies when someone is impaired or driving dangerously near children. So tomorrow morning, as I said, this bill will be heard. Superintendent Ebert will join the bill presentation virtually in Clark County alongside with Clark County Manager Kevin Schiller to present on this important bill, discuss really the importance of keeping our children safe every single day. I do want to note for you all, as a board, that there is also an Assembly Concurrent Resolution that'll be discussed at some point in the coming days, that will create a Joint Interim Standing Committee of the judiciary to conduct another study during the 25-26 interim related to road safety, including a number of areas, such as reviewing Nevada's laws on electric bikes and scooters to determine whether more regulation is needed, studying traffic violations in school zones, and analyzing whether higher penalties would improve safety for students, and also evaluating the authority of local governments and school districts to regulate e-bikes, e-scooters, school zone traffic violations, and determine if they need additional powers in these areas. So those are the two large pieces of legislation, tag-team with this study, that the legislature looks to potentially do over the interim before the 2027 regular legislative session. With that, I will pause and be quiet and open to any questions that you may have. The special session, we're not sure how long this The special session, we're not sure how long this will go, and we are taking it day by day, and we look forward to meeting tomorrow and discussing the school safety initiative to protect our kids. So, thank you for the time and provide, and giving me the opportunity to give you an update, and I'm, I will stand happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Keating. Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I wanted to go over some, the film tax quickly. Just kind of, you know, I know we don't know for sure how much revenue we could possibly get, but if we do that revenue, would it stay in Clark County?
Thank you for the question, Brad Keating for the record. Yes, so basically, what, what we do is, as part of the film, and I'm not the tax expert, but I will play one on Google Meet this evening. What will happen is that there's a special entertainment district that'll be created in Summerland to build these studios over the 33 acres of land. When that occurs and things are built, there will be a special tax in that district specifically. So, there will be pieces of, the Clark County School District will get funds directly as it relates to, there will be some property tax revenue collected from the studios, their sales tax that will be created based on, as they build entertainment districts and housing and food, or not housing, but hotels and food and lodging, and places for people to go eat and people to go see everything. That will bring revenue in, as well as a lodging tax for those who stay in that area. So, what will happen is, pieces of those three taxes will then be allocated directly to the Clark County School District for us to be able to fund pre-K programs directly. So, those dollars are funded straight out of that entertainment district and given directly to the Clark County School District and no other, no other district to touch anything in that manner.
Perfect. And then, maybe at the end, our superintendent can give us a briefing on how she, what she, how she had answered that question for pre-K. And my last question was about cyber safety. If you could just briefly, high-level go over what that bill would look like.
So, we're working on that, and I will provide the information to you. What it does, though, is based on the security measures that the state went through with their website being hacked, what they do is they create the, a statewide security operations center, as well as a talent pipeline program to help build individuals to become security experts. So, they are building that, and then it will also offer the opportunity for school districts or local governments to be a part of a collaboration and a bigger collective group of security operations where we can all share that information, work together. We could, if we decided to purchase cybersecurity operations from this coalition, we could do that in the future, but it really brings everybody together to ensure we are as safe as possible in all local government fashions.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Biassadi.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Brad. Thank you for the team for emphasizing so much the, the safety, the prioritizing the safety of our students, and I'm really happy to see that this is coming, you know, coming through now, and that this topic is, is here now, and it's being addressed. But I do have a question. Do we provide any direction to the community, to parents that perhaps want to follow the session, or provide input, contact their legislators, or weigh in in public comment?
I can take that one.
The difficulty of the special session is just not knowing what's going to happen at any given moment. Superintendent Ebert was asked to, to present on pre-K initiatives today, and right in the middle of her testimony, the audio went down, and there was a 35-minute wait time for her to finish her last few comments. We know that this bill is being heard in the morning. Other than that, the beauty of Nevada and the way we operate in the legislative session is there is no open meeting law, there's no requirement to post agendas prior to, to bills being heard, so it just becomes difficult in a special session to be able to provide that information. But I will work with Ms. Seer and Superintendent Ebert to make sure that we are putting out whatever information we can to the public, because I do think that's important. It's a good point.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Cabasos.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Superintendent Ebert. I understand from speaking with you and from reports I'm getting that you did a fabulous job on talking about how absolutely wonderful the benefits to pre-K would be if this bill goes through. However, I do have a question, just to clarify, is that you were presenting today so that if this bill goes through, that we'd be able to explain how we're going to implement that money, whatever the monies would tend to be. So, is our team right now, is our team speaking officially in favor of this bill, or are we still kind of in neutral, and we're only explaining our implementation? I don't know if I said that right.
I don't know who wants to take that one.
I, I can take it. I wasn't sure if Brad was going to take it or not. I feel like I'm back at the legislature this morning. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? No. So, thank you for, yes, we start, I mean, just like we started with school start times, right? The research, the why behind the work. And we are the experts in K-12, pre-K-12 education, and that's what we presented on. We are not the experts on tax, taxes, and I actually said that in my talking points this afternoon. So, that is for the legislature to decide.
Thank you. I think that ends our questions. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Keating. Thank you, Ms. Seer. That was just an, this information. We're going to go on to 5.06, revision of the 2025 calendar of board meetings. It's an addendum. I do want to bring your attention to the date of December 3, 2025. The suggestion is to move our start time from 4:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. There is some other events occurring, and it, it brings a conflict to the schedule, and so that is the suggestion on the table for consideration for the team. I can answer any questions. Trustee Cabasos.
I don't have any questions. From what I understand, we would be making this change for a very good reason, and so I would be in favor of that, and I would be ready to make a motion to approve it.
Thank you. Trustee Johnson, do you have a question? Or you'd like?
I was going to second her.
Thank you. So, I have a motion from Trustee Cabasos, a second from Trustee.
I have a question.
Oh, Trustee Biassadi.
What is the, the reason for, for this consideration, changing the time?
Yes, so, a couple months ago, Nevada Business Magazine asked for nominations for the most respected leaders within our region, and our superintendent is one of those honorees. Trustee Dominguez, do you have a question?
You just answered my question.
Okay. So, I have a first, and I have a second. Please cast your, oh, okay. Please cast your votes. Oh, do, oh, sorry, public comment, there, I'm sorry. No, I did not call for any cards. Does anybody have any public comment on action, I mean, item number 5.06? Case seen, none? Please cast your votes. That motion passes 6 to 0. We are now going to go to our public comment. We have one person signed up, and that is Ms. Crydell, if you'd come forth, and then also Jasmine. We have two microphones. Please just state your name for the record. Please proceed.
Good evening. Vicki Crydell, for the record, third-grade teacher, Clark County School District. Picture this, a first-grade teacher sitting in her small-group table looks up and is horrified to see one of her students pointing a gun at her. Before she could stop him, he shot her through the hand and into her chest. This is a real story, and it happened in Virginia almost two years ago. Thankfully, Abigail Zwerner survived, and her story is a haunting reminder that educators and support professionals are on the front line of a crisis. The behaviors that we see in classrooms every day are now affecting both learning and educator safety. A survey published by NEA last August said that four out of five educators say violence towards staff is rising in our schools. Here in CCSD, we had our own horrific example of educator violence at Eldorado High School. I think we can all agree that we do not want anything like that to happen again. Going back to the situation with Abby Zwerner, the student who shot her had well-documented behavior challenges. He had already tried to choke another teacher. He had thrown Ms. Zwerner's phone down on the ground and broke it two days prior. The day of the shooting, five different staff members have gone to administration with concerns about the student. One of them said students were reporting that this child had a gun in his backpack and was showing it to other children at recess. No action was taken. And because no one acted, a young woman almost died and has left the teaching profession forever. All of the people who work with the students in CCSD deserve to feel safe in their buildings. We should feel confident that there are proactive safety measures in place and training available to help us navigate the behaviors we are seeing today. We need administrators who listen, as well as counselors and social workers in every building. We need a way to report to the district when our administrators are not responding to our safety concerns. A panic button is helpful, but a helpline is vital in preventing tragedies, because protecting our educators is also protecting our children. Thank you.
Thank you so much. After Ms. Jasmine Dutch? Please proceed, Ms. Jasmine.
Sorry, just give me a quick second here.
And actually, while you're looking, I forgot to ask if there was anybody that had not completed a public speaker card. Okay, I'll close that out. Ms. Jasmine, please proceed.
Good evening, Members of the Board. My name is Jasmine. I am here today as a concerned citizen about two current Board of Trustees who support individuals who have been a threat to our children's education. One of the Board Trustees has a picture on their social media of themselves with Linda McMahon, who was appointed as the Secretary of Education by the Trump Administration. Trump has not been shy about what the Secretary of Education's job is, which is to dismantle education. Both of these trustees have supported Charlie Kirk's beliefs, who has also vocalized he does not believe young women should go to college unless they are there for their MIs degree. While this is degrading and offensive, it is more infuriating knowing that there are two female trustees that support these beliefs. If I had a daughter, I would not want people like this to have influence on her education and limit what she could do because she's female. They have advocated for banning certain books in schools, supported policies that exclude trans children, and do not advocate for minority children. It is dangerous to continue to have these individuals as public leaders who influence our children's education. I am asking them, like I have asked other officials, to resign and to step down if they're not going to be public leaders who advocate for education for all children, and I mean all children, not just the ones that they care about. Thank you very much for your, for your time.
Thank you so much. After Dutch, we will have Alan Hines. Alan? Dutch, please proceed.
Hello, my name is Dutch, and I'm here again for the same reason I was here last time. I am here to voice my concerns about one trustee in particular. This trustee is responsible for the founding and creation of a local hate group known as My Children's Advocate. After perusing through their Facebook posts for less than an hour, I was shocked and overwhelmed by the amount of hatred I was exposed to. On this page, we'll find homophobia, transphobia, blatant misinformation, themes of Christian nationalism, and anti-vax propaganda. You would also find a picture of this trustee standing in solidarity with a certain redheaded Nazi who likes to come into these school board meetings and defile our ears with her racist and incoherent babblings, but that's just part of it. This trustee also feels comfortable enough to post things like "only demons celebrate murder" on their personal Facebook. One may look at this and ask, "What's wrong with that sentiment?" Well, I'll be happy to answer that question. Considering that the trustee who posted this is the same trustee that doxxed teachers for comments about Charlie Kirk, I think it is safe to say that the trustee is referring to teachers, and I don't think a board trustee should be referring to teachers as demons. It's highly inappropriate, corny, and just weird. This trustee has also invalidated parental concerns regarding the presence of ICE in schools by posting the following on their personal Facebook, quote, "ICE has never detained minor-age students within school buildings, comma, 'Stop the fear mongering,' end of quote." It seems that the trustee didn't think those concerns were valid and chose to ridicule parents for thinking so. These are not traits that a board trustee should have. I have many more examples, but I don't think the trustee has the attention span due to severe lack of education. Thank you for listening. I hope you heard me, Lorena.
Thank you. For those that are in the audience and part of our business meeting, that's not an appropriate comment. This is a business meeting, and I'll ask you that, you address this as a team with no personal references. After Alan, Ms. Tanya Atterberry? Mr. Hines, please proceed.
Good evening, Trustees, Madam President, Superintendent Ebert. My name is Alan Hines. I'm a member of SURGE, Las Vegas, speaking tonight as an individual. Research shows that exclusionary discipline practices like suspensions and expulsions are associated with negative outcomes for students, including missed instructional time, low test scores, higher absence and dropout rates, and involvement with juvenile and criminal justice systems. Also, exclusionary discipline has been shown to disproportionately impact students of color and those with disabilities. Dr. Kyle Rogers, a CCSD teacher, has clearly reported this last point in his recent extensive research. In order for CCSD to become the destination district that we all want it to be, we need to create a community that welcomes and supports students of all colors, capabilities, and genders. School climates must inspires, inspire feelings of trust, safety, and belonging in order to allow students to be accountable, to reflect on their behaviors, and to make amends for any wrongdoings. I'm asking that the CCSD Board take an honest look at previous behavior and discipline audits, as well as currently-reported statistics from Kyle Rogers and others, in order to move away from the overuse of exclusionary discipline practices and towards enhanced use of restorative practices designed to keep students in school and engaged, and to help them to assimilate into an educational environment that truly cares that they are there, and that wants to see them achieve at their highest potential levels. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. After Ms. Atterberry, Brandon Summers?
My good. Tanya Atterberry, for the record. Thanks for continuing your review of Regulation 62150. I saw the changes on the draft, so as a work in progress, I hope to see maybe changes to the committee outlined in the regulation. Parents need to be aware and know the process of challenging a book using the CCF 400 form, which I think is a piece that is missing, which can be cumbersome and confusing for any parent who is trying to look at that piece. I do like the draft that removed the form altogether. The less hoops, the better, but that's just my opinion. So, student safety, I did want to bring something to you. So, Go Guardian Beacon Alerts, as a counselor, I receive those daily. The increase, the amount of them that are, that are coming is increasing tenfold. I get, on a, on a slow day, it's five. On a busy day, it's 12 to 15 beacon alerts. And one of the reasons why these beacon alerts are coming is because the students are conversing on those Google Docs. So, the Google Docs that they are getting, they are able to share those Google Docs with their friends, and they get to have these wonderful conversations that I do not like to read, about all kinds of things. And then, certain words get targeted, and then we get the notifications that the kid is suicidal, which they could be talking about anything, hip-hop, music, anything, and it just does that. So, one of the things that we had So, one of the things that we had talked about, because I do work for an online school, so I understand how complicated things can get, but the one of the things was, we were talking about being able to disable the share button, removing the people tab, and it would prevent students from making unsupervised Google Docs. I'm not 100% sure if any of you know about the safety issues that are going on with these Google Docs, but it is a tremendous thing. They are unsupervised, they are talking about topics that are just, there's just stuff going on that are like, whoa. We do like the beacon alerts, because obviously we need to deal with the suicide of kids that are talking about that stuff, but even on Chromebooks, they're able to access each other's stuff and share a lot of information that we probably shouldn't be reading, and then allowing these kids to kind of converse with that. So, just an FYI, that there is safety of our kids probably needs to be looked at while we're looking at these Google Docs, and maybe there's a way to disable the certain things that they are able to do outside and unsupervised, because I'm thinking maybe a lawsuit in the future when parents are saying, "Why is my kid out there talking to a stranger about certain things?" They meet up, I just, there's just a lot of stuff going on, and it's a dangerous environment right now for these young people. So, that is just my point of information for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. After Mr. Summers, then Justin Cooper will end our evening. Mr. Cooper?
All right.
Mr. Summers, please proceed.
Okay. Good evening, Superintendent Ebert, Madam President, and distinguished trustees. Brandon Summers, for the record. I'm here this evening because I want to put on the record that I was recently riffed. I am a support staff employee and was given a choice last week to either involuntarily resign, sorry, involuntarily be reassigned or resign. I have already submitted a written public comment. However, I wanted to speak to the board tonight and also let those watching from home know that this process was jarring and disruptive. Those employees who were retained via the Reduction in Force Directive were given just a few days to decide, take it or leave it. For me, I wanted to remain employed and keep benefits in this time of financial and political uncertainty. So, I accepted the new position, which increased my daily commute by 28 miles, and that's two hours from me via public transit. Of course, I'm still grateful to still have a job. I have people that I know who work for the federal government who don't, but I never thought that I would have to wake up at 4:30 in the morning to get to my job. I am disappointed that CCSD employees would be given such short notice to have to get their fares in order. And if CCSD truly cares, then more thoughtfulness needs to go into decision-making in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper?
Hi, Board. My name is Justin Cooper. Some of you probably know me from my emails, and I use ChatGPT to kind of summarize this because I know I'm pretty emotional and chaotic in those emails. So, I wrote, I was a site-based tactician at MJ Christensen from April 23 to September 24. I consistently worked above my duties. I removed outdated projectors and mounts to accelerate classroom modernization for the school, performed numerous tasks outside my role as a support staff, deployed Chromebooks early when requested, and often skipped breaks and lunches to meet school needs. I received multiple rave reviews for performance, particularly regarding emergency readiness and responsiveness regarding AED. These rave reviews were never presented to me publicly, despite that being the standard The reason, I developed or misunderstood uncomfortable and personal relationship situation involving a teacher. No accusations of threats, aggression, or misconduct were ever presented to me. I attempted to apologize over the summer for any misunderstanding. After that apology, the teacher reported feeling uncomfortable and labeled the contact as harassment and stalking, which I was never allowed to discuss. I was never investigated thoroughly for the formal HR process and was never explained before administrative action was taken. On August 1, and again on August 9, administration attempted to make me sign a summary of conference from that, which labeled any interactions with the teacher was harassment, forbade me for interacting with any capacity, or I would be told if I'd be threatened with insubordination if I refused to sign. I rested clarification and conversation, but denied any opportunity to decide, to deny any opportunity to explain myself or understand what behavior had violated policy. I was repeatedly placed into situations that conflicted with the directive not to interact with the teacher, example being assigned to sister class during lunch duty. I was blamed for obstructing student education, even though I was just following district guidelines and AUP Chromebook policy, and ticket resolution had to go through the principal to, for any resolution. I emailed administration about deteriorating mental health, impacted situation work, requests for transfer, requests for mediation, a third-party resolution. These messages were ignored, and ultimately, I resigned on 9/11 after, 24, after I was assigned to help that teacher's classroom for lunch duty. I did not want to resign, but there's no mediation, explanation, support, or only threats of insubordination and conflicting orders. I wasn't.
Thank you so much. Mr. Cooper, if you want, we could take your written comments and put them in public record. With that, we're going to move to item 7.01, upcoming meeting of the Board of Trustees, Wednesday, December 3, 2025, at 3:00 p.m. With that, I will entertain a motion for German trustee Barron.
Let's make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Trustee Cavazos.
I'll second that motion.
I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That passes six to zero. Thank you. Have a good evening.